Good evening, and thank you for viewing the April 19th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. We're going to start with a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the land we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges this Wiat community, the elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Now, if you'd like me, please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the city clerk please call the role?
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Stillman. Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Schaefer is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on an item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each of these items, we'll be taking person, in-person public comment first and then move on to the online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you're wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. And just because I see a lot of new faces, for the first open early oral communications, we have a 15-minute time period, so if there's cards over there, we'll take the first four here and then go to Zoom, and if there's time, we can come back. So if you wish to speak at the first oral communication, go ahead and grab one of those cards. All right, so we're going to head on to ceremonial matters. The first is going to be the proclamation in recognition of Bike Month, May 2023. That's going to be read by Councilmember White.
Thank you. Whereas millions of people bicycle to work, school, social gatherings, and do errands because it is inexpensive and environmentally sound form of travel, as well as an excellent form of exercise and family recreation. And whereas bicycling addresses the global problems of climate change, oil dependence, and air and noise pollution, it reduces traffic, parking congestion, and noise, and increases physical activity and public health. And whereas, the city of Arcata promotes programs that encourages bicycling and educate cyclists and motorists on how to share the road so all users feel safe. These initiatives earned Arcata Bicycle Friendly Community Silver Award from the League of American Bicyclists, and the city continues towards a goal of achieving gold-level bicycle-friendly city in the near future. And whereas, the city of Arcata has prioritized the development of a safe, connected, active transportation network through projects such as Humboldt Bay Trail, Arcata Annie and Mary Trail, the Arcata Bicycle Boulevard, and the Bike Share Program. And whereas, the city's goal is to advance bicycle-friendly routes throughout town each year, and therefore invests in bicycle and trail infrastructure, including recently-approved active transportation program funding for planning, design, and construction of the Annie and Mary Trail from Sunset Boulevard to Humboldt Bay Municipal District Park. And whereas, in observation of National Bike Month and Bike Month Humboldt, the city and Humboldt Bike Month Coalition, BikeMonthHumboldt.org, encourages residents and visitors to participate in various Bike Month activities in May to share community support for cycling. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of Arcata that May 2023 is Bike Month throughout Arcata. The council encourages everyone to participate in Bike Month activities, encourages the installation of bicycle parking and other facilities to support Arcata's growing number of bicyclists, and encourages people to bicycle a means of transportation this and every month. Dated April 19th, 2023, by Sarah Schaefer, our mayor.
And I would like to add some few words. I never thought how much I would enjoy cycling until I moved to Arcata. Cycling has become my legs, the way I get to work every day. It has become my DoorDash, as it carries all my food. Has become my canvas of art, as I have seen amazing sunsets while riding. It has become my therapy, as it provides me a sense of freedom and escape from the pressures of everyday life. It has become my exercise, because even now it is electric. It has shown me that if I can deal with a heavy electric bike with no battery in my way to Fickle Hill, I can deal with anything. And finally, cycling has become a way to meet great people, and that's how much I think cycling can change and shape someone's life. And now I want to invite Unia Smith for the Bike Month Humboldt Coalition.
Thank you. So let us share with you just two days of Bike Month events in Arcata.
Dejenos presentar dos eventos para el mes de bicicleta en Arcata.
May 11th is Bike to Work Day in Arcata. There will be an Energizer station at the co-op from 7:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m.
En mayo 11, a las 11 de la mañana, va a haber una estación para recargar la energía en el co-op de Arcata de las 7 de la mañana a las 9 y media de la mañana.
And at noon, the noon rally on the plaza.
Y al mediodía, el rally en la plaza.
And there will be free goodies and prizes at both.
Y va a haber bocadillos y premios en ambos.
On May 20th, the city will host the 15th Annual Kids Bike Rodeo in the Creamery District.
El mayo 20 también va a haber el rodeo para niños.
And then see more events at BikeMonthHumboldt.org and social media.
Por favor, para más eventos, Bike Month Humboldt, Dark Art, y redes sociales.
Thank you. All right, next we have the proclamation recognizing May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month. This proclamation will be read by Councilmember Stillman.
Thank you. The recognizing May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas National Historic Preservation Month is sponsored by the National Trust to celebrate historic preservation throughout our nation, and is celebrated by the city's Historic Landmarks Committee and the Historical Site Society of Arcata. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, buildings, fostering local pride, maintaining community character, while enhancing livability. And whereas, the Historic Landmarks Committee will celebrate Preservation Month by focusing on building educational connections between the city and Arcata High School, Humboldt State University, and the Historical Site Society of Arcata, featuring places on the plaza. And whereas, the Historical Site Society of Arcata preserves the Phillips House Museum and maintains a website featuring walking tours, preservation articles, and archives, which is used by the local schools to discuss the evolution of the community. And whereas, the city of Arcata's Historic Landmarks Committee continues to work on fostering education, incentivizing strategies, include its Milz Act program, and to help property owners rehabilitate and maintain their historic properties. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes May 2023 as National Historic Preservation Month, and calls upon the people of Arcata to recognize and observe National Historic Preservation Month by walking the Arcata Plaza, Arcata's historic neighborhoods, assessing historic information through QR codes located on posters and historic publications, visiting the Historical Site Society of Arcata's website, following Phillips House Museum on Instagram, and the Historical Site Society of Arcata's Facebook page containing then-and-now photographs and articles in the Mad River Union. Entering the Phillips House Museum by using the QR code in the hallway as you go to the Arcata Main Street office, or there's a sign right in front of the Phillips House that you can do the same. So this is dated April 19th, 2023, and signed by Mayor Schaefer. And Jeanette Cooper, Dr. Jeanette Cooper is accepting.
Councilwoman Stillman has introduced me, but I'll introduce myself again. I'm Dr. Jeanette Cooper. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Historical Site Society of Arcata. I am a board member of that society, but I'm also a member of the Historic Landmark Committee. So I'm heavily personally invested in historic preservation in this community. The Historic Site Society of Arcata was established in 1972 to promote recognition of the cultural heritage of Arcata. Our aim is to identify and encourage the preservation of historically and architecturally significant structures in the city. Identification and preservation is essential for understanding and appreciating where we come from. These actions not only have an impact on local culture, but on our economy. It's not simply the beautiful environmental setting of our city which attracts tourists, students, and newcomers, it's also the beauty of our city's architectural gems. The society's efforts are directed at identification and preservation for the whole community. When possible, we interact with our community to achieve these goals. We interact with the university, particularly by taking on interns, giving them experience with museum exhibits, primary source research, local history, architectural knowledge, and opportunities to publish in our newsletter. We interact with visitors via the Phillips House Museum and offer other services such as the advice and the tours that we provided to the Family Nature Summit last July. We interact with our local high schools, whose musicians joined us at our annual tea and provided the entertainment. Further, we hope to forge a partnership that joins forces to have a Halloween event to benefit both the music program and our museum simultaneously. We also hope to join forces and interact with them for a variety of other future events to benefit both. We interact with our residents, of course, by offering interpretation and guidance resources via our website, such as the guides to architectural tours, and we also, in the past, have offered informational presentations to the public, and we hope to do a lot more of this in the future. We interact with individuals and organizations in both Arcata and Eureka who share our common interests of identification and preservation. One of our goals this year is to increase our outreach efforts, and thus increase our interactions with individuals and organizations in our community, because these interactions bring awareness, support, joy, and prosperity to our city. So as a member of the Historic Landmark Committee, I just want to advise you to keep a lookout, because as we've just learned, Preservation Month is in May. So we hope to offer some chances for the public to get more involved, to stop and smell the roses, per se, or the buildings, right, by appreciating them. So keep a lookout for us perhaps at the farmers' markets, and we hope to, again, collaborate with the high school, as Councilwoman Stillman mentioned earlier. So, thank you.
Okay, next we have a proclamation in recognition of World Tai Chi Day, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Whereas. Whereas, World Tai Chi Day is now celebrated in hundreds of cities in over 80 nations annually. And whereas, Tai Chi has been called "medication in motion" by Harvard Health publication for the myriad of health benefits it offers. And whereas, numerous studies have pointed to the benefits of Tai Chi for stress relief, improved balance and coordination among the elderly, as well as improved behavior for adolescents with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. And whereas, World Tai Chi Day is meant to bring the community together to learn more about this gentle exercise, a series of mindful, relaxed movements that people of all ages and fitness levels can participate to improve health by boosting the immune system, increasing vitality, longevity, and well-being. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes World Tai Chi Day in the city of Arcata on the Arcata Plaza at 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, April 29th, 2023, and encourages all residents to attend and to visit WorldTaiChiDay.org to learn more. And I attended that last year, and it's a really lovely event, so I encourage you all to do the same.
I was just going to say how absolutely delighted I was when Stacy was mayor and she showed up. It's just so wonderful for the council to support this, because it really does dedicate itself, not just my classes, all the Tai Chi classes in the area, to us taking more and more responsibility for our own health and our own well-being. And we know our doctors and our nurses are over the top. I have some of them in my classes, and my heart goes out to the medical community, because it's just a real hard time for everyone to get the right health balance, right health care. So this will really help anybody fill in those places where we fall through the cracks of our modern health care. No blaming of that health care system, because they're doing their very, very best to meet incredible demands. But I think the fact that this practice will lower blood pressure and prevent fall, it's a 50% reduction. And I've had a stroke that wiped out my vestibular system. I still am able to walk around, and I think it's the 40 years of Tai Chi, my muscle memory. I'm not going to brag, because you never know, but I'm not taking credit for that. I'm giving thanks. So I want to invite the whole audience, the whole council, and everybody to come and play with us. It's the only event that I know of, anyway, that's global and open to absolutely every human being on this planet, and not as a spectator sport. We have other events that are sport-oriented that are global, but you can't participate in it. This one starts way over, and I think it's Australia, and it just flows across the whole planet. So 90 countries, hundreds of thousands of people. Thank you for supporting it, and hope to see you. And this is going to go on my emails to all the students. They're thrilled, too. So thank you so much.
All right. Our next proclamation is declaring April 2023 of Arts, Cultural, and Creativity Month, which will once again be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Thank you. Before I read that, I was remiss in introducing that was Glenda Hesselstein accepting that. So thank you, Glenda. So next we have Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. Whereas, the city of Arcata celebrates the role that the arts and creativity play in helping us navigate the pandemic, amplify the need for racial equity, and highlight the power of the arts to change our lives for the better. And whereas, arts arcata organizations work in partnership to support the arts and creativity in Arcata as an essential part of our thriving community through services including youth programs, public art initiatives, artists in schools, the sanctuary and playhouse arts, arts arcata, and numerous festivals and special events. And whereas, the Playhouse Arts partners locally with indigenous and non-indigenous local governments, nonprofits, and businesses to bring such programs as migrations, Round Story, oh, boy, Sukisoneena, so sorry if I destroyed that, The Wonderwagon, and many family fun events. And whereas, there are numerous arts and cultural organizations and sites throughout Arcata, including 29 galleries and collections, 14 film and performing arts venues, 38 public art spaces, 21 community art studio classroom spaces, and 10 annual artistic festivals. And whereas, Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month of April brings statewide awareness and advocacy that recognizes the crucial role of arts, culture, and creativity in the lives of everyone in California. And whereas, the city of Arcata recognizes that the arts and creativity support student success in lifelong learning, provide key job skills, and bring joy to our community while strengthening our connections. And now, therefore, it be proclaimed that by the City Council of the city of Arcata, the month of April 2023 is Arts, Cultural, and Creativity Month, and encourages everyone to celebrate the power of the arts in our community. And today, we have Tina McKenzie here to accept this.
I just want to thank the city council for acknowledging the value that artists in our community contribute to our lives every single day. I'm standing in for Jackie Dandino, who is home with COVID, unfortunately. She can't be here. She feels good, but still can't go out. But it's on behalf of the Arcata Playhouse and Playhouse Arts, and really all the artists in our community. This area is amazing, so much creativity, so much going on. And being a volunteer at the Playhouse, I have been amazed by the depth and breadth of the many, many programs that they provide. If you aren't familiar with them, there's the Family Fun Series that's going on right now. You can go on the website, there's something for everybody and every age. So thank you so much for this recognition.
Okay, and then I'm going to read the certificate of appreciation presented to Jane McGuire. The City Council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes and thanks Jane McGuire for her eight years of service on the Arcata Parks and Recreation Committee. In addition to being a committee member, Jane served as a chair of the Plaza Improvement Task Force in 2018 and 2019. Jane is a recreational professional and brought her knowledge and technical skills to the committee. For years, Jane has volunteered her time outside the committee meetings to further support staff in selection of inclusive and accessible recreation features for city parks and playgrounds. The impact of her commitment to and skill in developing inclusive play spaces will be felt by the city for years to come. The council expresses its sincere appreciation for her guidance, support, and work to benefit our entire community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I'm excited that one of the projects that we've been focusing on is coming to the city council today for a vote, the new equipment at Redwood Park. So shout out to that. Thank you.
All right, so this brings us to early oral communication. The city council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future added topic or reviews or referred to staff. Speakers may be limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item, and again, at the end of the meeting, under item number 12. So if you've grabbed a card, please make your way to the podium. Raise your hand if you are on Zoom, or press star nine if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. We'll take the first four here and then go to Zoom.
Hello to Castle and to staff. My name is James Becker, and I've been working with the community members to circulate the petition for L Street pathway to become a permanent linear park, and the language is as follows. We support the existing L Street bicycle pedestrian pathway to be officially designated as a linear park from Alliance Road to Samoa Boulevard, and that this linear park be preserved and enhanced as a green space for recreation, play, and community. We also support the spoken recommendation of the Chair of Arcata Transportation Safety Committee at its August 2nd, 2022 meeting. Advise a circulation plan out that eliminates L Street as being considered for new streets and car traffic. This area is to be recommended to become a car-free linear park that prioritizes people. I wish to provide you an update on the petition for the designation of L Street Rails with Trails linear corridor as a linear park, a linear park that relies on open spaces and right-of-way from an existing rail corridor to best serve Arcata's future infill, the greater Humboldt Bay area, and the Great Redwood Trail and beyond. Signers include previous city council members and mayors, business members, architects, members of the local Sierra Club group, community members of all ages, including Cal Poly Humboldt students, a broad spectrum of customers from the visiting co-op, including out-of-the-town visitors, signers from neighborhoods all around Arcata. Online signatures are up to 125, including primarily Arcata residents. Many have walked the path and understand what would permanently lost by paving over open spaces. They also appreciate what is possible by utilizing those open spaces with a linear park. With that said, I want to update you on the petition. We are presently at 669 signers. Finally, the scroll was 553, and it represented what was given to the planning commissioners. It has increased by 100 to 669. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Good evening. I wanted to address the March 28th, when we had our joint session, sea level rise. Thanks for putting that together. It's just too bad that we didn't have more time, because we had, you know, even on the city's list of questions to ask, there are still quite a few, and this is such an important subject. And I also feel it's unfortunate that it didn't happen like a year and a half ago, because, you know, it's sort of, there's a lot of pressure on not only the city council, but also the planning commission. A lot of money has been invested in this, with all the way from Bed Noble to Plan West, I don't know, 700,000 there, plus staff and city time. So I'm not seeing anybody asking some tough questions about this. I mean, I just think, and I think the public is bringing this up quite a bit, that you're still quite a bit on board on this. And I've read a lot of the submitted letters. We've had PhD professors from Cal Poly, sea level rise, they really questioned the development of the gateway because of the area. We've had experts from there that have written from the standpoint of earthquake, tsunami. So it just seems like we're in this trap, that we're not going to reverse ourselves. There's a lot of pressure on the planning commission. I'm not too happy with what's happening there from the standpoint that, you know, you show up and you only get two minutes to talk, you know? That is not very democratic. It's not a good process. It's not going to turn into good results. I don't know whether this was your intentions or what, but it's just, it's going to turn off a lot of people, and I would suggest revisiting that and coming up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we ready? Hello. I'll start out by thanking you for your service to the community. I know it's a job. Anyway, I want to just talk today about the conversation that we're having in Arcata regarding housing. You'll note in this chart I just handed out, and there are some available for people if you want to see them. What's interesting in the chart, I just wanted to go through 50 years, from 1970 to 2020, basically, 2021, the town population, the enrollment at Humboldt State or Cal Poly Humboldt, and the housing units that were built by that decade's end. And just to quickly review this, since we don't have much time, in 1970, there was just under 9,000 people that lived in Arcata. There was 5,200 students, and we had a base of about 4,000. There was five thousand two hundred students and we had a base of about four thousand houses. And then you can go up to nineteen ninety, we grew in population. We have just under sixteen thousand, fifteen thousand six hundred. It got up to seventy-five or six hundred students during that decade. And there was about twenty-seven extra, you know, houses added. So, we had about sixty-seven thousand, or hundred houses. So, anyway, my point here isn't so much this. It's that actually if you note, we've had two-point-three people per house all through these decades. So, I just find that interesting. But I don't want to, so we're doing most of our planning, most of the hearing that you hear about is we're talking about student housing. And I just, what I think this points out is that there's population housing that's not being discussed. And so, I just, since I only have twenty seconds left, I want to mention Senate Bill Nine. I'm promoting this because this is something the state did a year ago and it opens up our neighborhood housing to people who want to. There's no forcing, there's nothing, just people who want to. And I think we should have an ad hoc committee in this community that looks at Senate Bill Nine, looks at the community development plans, put something together for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Good evening. I know many of you or perhaps all of you watched the Planning Commission meetings. At the meeting Tuesday last week at April eleventh, it was good to see. Many important topics were discussed. I think there was a lot of progress. There was also a shift in the number of people involved. The participants at the meeting, all in all, there were twenty people who spoke, which is a far different from the usual three or four or five people. There's a high level of engagement. It's good to see. At the meeting, there was a letter from Dave Ryan, Transportation Safety Committee Chair. It was given to the Planning Commission. If you haven't read it, I encourage you to read it. It is on the arcataone.com website. The letter was not addressed to the Planning Commission, but it was distributed to them. The, I've stated at the Plan Commission meeting that I have three primary goals. One is to see what we can call workforce housing built in Arcata for people who are perhaps in the twenty to thirty-five dollar an hour range, who have difficulty finding affordable housing for their budget. Second is homeownership opportunities, which is another difficult matter for people who want to gain equity in their home. And the last third one is very important to me, is a linear park in the L Street Corridor. And that's what I'll continue to work on. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. All right, let's go to Zoom comments.
And we don't have any online early oral communications.
All right, we've got about five more minutes. If anybody else wants to speak, come on up.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. And I've been thinking a lot about a lot of issues in our town. And I walked through the plaza today and I think I saw more dogs than people on the plaza. I just want to alert you to that reality. And I was watching a webcast on a book called It's Not Too Late or Not Too Late by Rebecca Solnit that just came out. And it's about the climate reality. But in the discussion on this webcast with others, it wasn't just about climate issues. It was about how people are responding in our communities throughout the country. And fear is a big one. People are afraid. And we, as Arcadans, need to remember that CBD I talked about. Courage, bravery, boldness, decisiveness. We need to be brave. We need to step out of line in regards to everybody else's conformity in the fear. And as we think about all these issues, and I'll start with the unhoused and all the vulnerable people I've had to encounter and animals I've had to encounter lately. We need to be brave and bold and not just go along with what everybody else is doing. Humboldt County and Arcata can be in the vanguard. I heard the talk at Godwit Days about how the marsh was created fifty years ago. Historically, a renowned worldwide thing in our community that everybody around the world admired and appreciated. It's now a little dated now and with sea level rise, we need to think about some alternatives. But that's where the bravery and the courage and the decisiveness and the non-fearing leadership is going to have to be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. We have time for one more public comment if anybody else wants to talk. One more person can come up. Great, come on down. Hi.
My name is Perry Phillips and I'm a resident of Arcata. I just became aware that the City of Arcata has approved a residential rental inspection program. Is that correct? I assume it is. It's been posted on your website. As of March first, I suppose unanimously approved this according to this document. And I'm curious about what the city is planning to do. I assume you're constructing a database. Is that correct? You're constructing a database of all rental property in this area? And I guess I'm concerned, you know, is the purpose to regulate? You're going to step in and do what other communities don't do by regulating the housing rental market? Is that the idea? You know, you're saying it's for health and safety, but I've been a resident of a lot of different states and cities. And as a landlord, I've been puzzled that the City of Arcata is going to try to, you know, enforce... What will it be? It seems to be, you're saying that the, I'm not sure from actually from this document, greater compliance of health and safety standards on long-term rental property. I don't know what that means. Is that fire inspections? Or is it, you know, I don't know, insects and rats that you're concerned about? Or is it a database that you're constructing in order to create a larger tax base? Is that what's, I don't know what's going on. Maybe you can just respond. I don't, I guess you can't respond because this is a public comment. My question then is more towards the audience. Like, what is the city doing with this? I don't know, but it seems odd and out of step with other communities that I've lived in. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you so much. All right, we are going to go ahead and move on to Consent Calendar. So, all matters on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that each item is removed from the Consent Calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the Consent Calendar, council members or members of the public can request an item be removed for a separate discussion. All right, A is bi-weekly report on disbursements. B is to ratify employment agreement with Emily R. Sinkhorn for Director of Environmental Services for the term of May third, two thousand twenty-three through May second, two thousand twenty-eight. C is to adopt Resolution number two-two-three-five-one approving an application to the Clean California Local Grant Program for the Valley West Connectivity and Beautification Project and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. D is to approve the purchase of one sidewalk restroom for Carlson Park and a world contract to Romtech in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents, including tax, utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number zero-eight-one-seven-two-one-dash-RMT and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. E to approve playground layout and award a contract for Redwood Park Playground Equipment and Surfacing Purchasing and Installation to Miracle Recreation Play Power Inc. in the amount of seven thousand seventy-nine, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents, including tax. Utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number zero-one-zero-five-two-one-dash-LTS-dash-three, authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount by up to sixteen thousand dollars to percent for a total amount not to exceed eight hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And F, approve amended and restated unsecured note between Open Door Community Health Centers and the City of Arcata. Do any council members wish to pull anything from the Consent Calendar?
So, I checked with staff and my understanding is that I don't necessarily need to pull item C, but I just wanted to let you know that I will recuse myself from the Consent Calendar adoption vote.
Thank you, Councilmember White.
And you can vote on the adoption vote. You can cast a vote. It's just the city clerk will note your recusal on C.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that'd like to pull anything from the Consent Calendar? Yes? Okay. D? All right, so can I get a motion? So, we have A, B, C, and F.
I move for approval. I will second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember Atkins Salazar. And can we get a roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Joanne, D?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I don't have children, but I can't believe the cost of a playground these days. That's all I can say. But what I also want to say is Redwood Park is a beautiful place and it will undoubtedly be a wonderful playground. But people who have children and don't have a vehicle, there's no bus service up there. It's a very dangerous road to walk to. And I just really want us to consider all the factors in access to such an expensive, yet will probably be a delightful playground. And we really need to think broader sometimes when we do these projects because I really want the young people of this community to be able to go to that playground on a regular basis and not, and safely get to the park. And if bus service or some sort of shuttle needs to be put in place, let's do that because that's a lot of money for not the entire community to have access to because Redwood Park is not accessible for some of the families in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And that was item E. Do we have a motion?
I move for item E.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember Atkins Salazar on item E. Can we get a roll call approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and for item G, sorry, I'm out of order. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Carol Graham and I am the property owner that's immediately downstream from the Carlson Park. And my property is in a sphere of influence for Arcata. I own forty acres on the south side of the river and I own forty acres and include the river bar and some river forest on the other side. Since starting planning for the Zanzi property, I have repeatedly asked to be contacted when the planning for the park was discussed. My guess is this is at least once a year that I have contacted the city. Last September, I again contacted the Parks and Rec Department and met with city staff on property and I was shown a map that, and told where the developed part of the park should be. As I remember the map, it was not specific and I asked that the trails that led to my property be moved so that they didn't lead to my property, and that has been done. I have also talked about several other concerns and asked again that I be notified when this came before the committee. I was surprised to see on the news the Carlson Park had received a large grant. Again, I contacted the Parks and Rec Department and again I was met by staff and the map that I was shown was very specific. It had playgrounds and parks and things like, you know, playground equipment and parking. I asked why I hadn't been contacted and the staff said that they had addressed my concerns. That's not the point. People who come to Carlson Park are not going to stay on Carlson Park. At least some of them aren't. They are going to go up and down the river. All of these adjacent property owners should have been contacted and asked for their input. The park requires more planning, the park requires more planning than just the bathroom and how much it's going to cost the city. Has the city contacted other small towns with parks, you know, river parks, to find out how to minimize the effects of the parks on upriver, you know, on riverside property and the undeveloped riverside forest like my property? What is the City of Arcata going to do to help the property owners on and near the forest? The situation is very different than any other park in Arcata. So, I, you know, I just feel noticing is an issue. All the property owners should have been contacted. A meeting should have been done. So, thank you very much for listening. I have no objection to the, you know, to what's going to be there, but it is going to bring people and, you know, that's the planning that needs to be done. What's the parking going to look like? What's the boating going to look like? How are you going to keep people off my property and other people's property? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comment. Do you have a motion on item D?
So, I would move for adoption of item number D.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got another motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember Atkins Salazar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to old business. And we are going to receive a presentation from Go Invest on addressing pension unfunded liability. So, last month, we heard an update on our pension liability, which is something that every city and county in California is faced with. Fortunately for Arcata, we don't carry significant debt in other areas. Tonight, we're going to review in more detail what options we have as a community to be proactive towards paying off this liability and will hopefully be making a recommendation on a strategy for staff to include in the upcoming budget. We're not going to be approving the final payment until we have the whole budget before us to keep that in mind so we can see what trade-offs need to be made. So, Tabitha, our Finance Director, Tabitha Millar, that was so fortunate to have. Can we get a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor, City Council, just a brief introduction before I turn it back over to Ira with Gov Invest. Just a reminder that we had an initial conversation with them on March fifteenth and unfortunately learned that we are looking at about twenty-nine-point-six million dollars in pension, unfunded pension obligations for the City of Arcata. I think it's important to note that this is not unique to us. This is really a statewide issue and even beyond that, it's nationwide. And if you've paid any attention to the protests that have been happening in France, it's also a sort of a universal issue, which is just the challenge of how to pay for these very large pension obligations and the earnings that are not kind of keeping up with it. It is, just a reminder, this is in the staff report, but it is by far our largest debt. If you excluded this, the city actually has a very low debt coverage. And it's also our highest interest rate because it's tied to that discount rate. So, what we're bringing forward tonight are some ideas that for you to have opportunities to potentially mitigate some of those costs. And as the Vice Mayor mentioned, what we're really looking for at the end of the conversation with Gov Invest, we'll talk a little bit about how we can fund that on the city side and get some direction from the City Council to move forward. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ira. And I can see you on the screen. So, we do have the presentation here, Ira, if we need to drive from here, but it looks like you can able, you're able to share it on your side.
Okay. Thanks again for having me back to talk about addressing pension unfunded liability. So, what we're going to do today is spend a little time with a quick recap of what we talked about the last meeting, talk about with pension projections. Talk about what's going to happen to your pension costs if future experience matches CalPERS assumptions. So, see where things are going. And then talk about how to address the unfunded liability as we go. So, we're basically focusing on three metrics here for your pension fund. Unfunded liability, which are plan assets, sorry, plan liabilities minus plan assets. That's a measure of where you are right now in your funding of the pension plan. Funded percentage, similar way of looking at this. It's plan assets divided by plan liabilities. So, instead of being an absolute number, the twenty-nine million dollars of unfunded liability, it shows how close the two are together. And then the third are required contributions. Each year, CalPERS calculates an amount that you are required to pay. That becomes the minimum amount that you can pay from the city. You're allowed to pay more and we'll talk about that as we go. We've also split it this time between your miscellaneous employees and your safety employee liability. So, just to try and see where they are and then showing them both combined. Contributions, as I mentioned before. calculated by CalPERS, they're split into two pieces as they calculate them. There's a normal cost. That's the cost for current service each year as it's earned. And it is paid as a percentage of payroll into CalPERS. Second piece of contributions are an amortization payment to pay off your unfunded liability. So to the extent that you're slightly behind target on past liabilities, CalPERS calculates an amount and has you pay that on top of it to catch up over a period of roughly 20 years. And this amount is paid as a fixed dollar amount each year. So even if your payroll increases, you hire new employees or have a lot of vacancies, your past liabilities pretty much stay the same. So that amount gets costed out each year as a fixed dollar amount. And the combination of those two becomes the total employer contribution, which is the minimum amount the city is required to pay each year under the law. So for the miscellaneous plan, what we see for the unfunded liability is we're expecting to see a big jump in unfunded liability between 2021 and 2022. The reason for that, as we talked about last meeting, is a lot of that's driven by investment return. And the investment return in the plan year ending June 30, 2022 was one of the bottom five in CalPERS investment return history. Minus 7.6 is what's going to be credited instead of a positive 6.8. So that difference, practically 14%, is going to increase your unfunded liability dramatically. So we're seeing that on the miscellaneous side. And then assuming things go back to normal, the plan is to slowly pay off your unfunded liability so that the last payment will be made in 2039 and 2040, you will be ahead of schedule. We can see that here, the funded percentage dropping from about 80 to about 70 next year. And then slowly working its way back up to get to 100% right around 2040. To do that, though, it's going to come from contributions. The orange here is the payment for normal costs each year of service as it's earned. And that stays relatively steady for a while. The purple are the payments for past service, the unfunded liability payments. And as you can see, a majority of your payments for the next 15 years are due to payments of unfunded liability. It's going to be close to three quarters of the total contributions in a decade. So this is, and this is just the miscellaneous plan. We have, and I'll go through the same thing with the safety plan and the total. But the reason we're here and talking about addressing unfunded liability is this picture right here. Most of your contributions due to unfunded liability, if we can make the unfunded liability, if we can reduce it or make it go away, then your ongoing contributions become a lot more affordable and your budgeting process becomes much easier. We look at safety, and by the way, the contributions for miscellaneous going up from about 1.7 up to about 2.7 over the next 10 to 12 years. Million dollars. Unfunded liability here for safety, going up from about 7 to about 11 in the next year. Big jump, slowly getting paid off, expected to be fully paid off in 2042. See the same thing with the funded percentage with the drop and then the increase coming. Contributions increasing dramatically from just under a million to about 1.7 million over the next decade, and most of that due to unfunded liability payments. So when we combine the two of these, what we see, we see the same patterns from all of these because all of these are mostly driven by the change in investment return. Or in the past, unfunded liability being created due to the changes in assumptions over time. The biggest two assumptions being the lowering of the assumed rate of return in the future, which had been as high as 8.75% in the past, is now 6.8. So again, less money expected from future investment return means more money required from the city. And the other one is extending life expectancies, which is happening too across the board. So combined, we're going to see unfunded liability jump up to a little over 29 million, as Tabitha mentioned. Funded percentage dropping down to about 70, although again, on the path to get paid by about 2041. And contributions overall going from about 2.75 million in fiscal year 20, the current fiscal year, up to about four and a half million in about a decade. So significant increases coming up, growing faster than revenues are probably expected to grow. So this is why we're going to talk about some options for addressing unfunded liability. So in terms of addressing unfunded liability, I want to go through some approaches the city can take to control future unfunded liability. Starting off with what you've done in the past. One thing the city did is they issued some bonds in 2015. And they used the proceeds of those bonds to pay off a portion of the city's unfunded liability. You put 2.1 million towards miscellaneous and 1 million towards safety. So that paid off some of the unfunded liability. But as you can see, unfunded liability came back. And that's something that can happen. And although I've got it on the future slide, I might as well talk about it now. Paying off unfunded liability is not like paying off a loan on your car or your house mortgage. If you pay off a loan on your car, once it's paid off, it's paid off. Unless you decide to buy another car, you don't have a car payment. Unfunded liability doesn't work that way. Unfunded liability can grow or shrink each year depending on certain things, and I'll talk about those a little more in the future. So it's basically trying to manage this across time and dealing with those areas where you can have some control. And other things that the city did is you went through and created a cost sharing agreement with the employees. So they're making additional contributions on top of the minimum required contributions for them to CalPERS. These differ by bargaining groups, and they range up to as much as 3% of pay. So the employees are helping cover part of the, another big part of the cost of their pensions. Now, why address this? As I showed in the graphs before, most of your current and upcoming required contributions are due to payments to unfunded actuary liability. And this is a debt, the 29.6 million that you have is basically a long-term debt, shows up on your balance sheets. And the city is effectively paying interest to CalPERS on this debt based on the assumed rate of return, which currently is 6.8%. So in addition to being probably the biggest liability that the city has, it's also paying, you're also paying the highest interest rate on this debt compared to others. So finding a way to get rid of this, shrink it down and lower it is good, basically good business for the city. Now, what is unfunded liability? How does it get created? So anytime, in order to determine costs of future benefits, CalPERS and their actuaries make assumptions as to what's going to be happening in the future. Assumptions on how long people are going to work, what their pay is going to increase by, when they're going to retire, how long they'll live. So anytime actual plan experience is different than the plan's assumptions, unfunded liability is created. And this can be either positive or negative. So sort of skipping around to the third bullet, when experience is worse for the plan than what was assumed. For example, when the investment return assumption got lowered to 6.8, meaning again, less money expected from investment return in the future, more money can be required from the city. New unfunded liability is created. This is what's referred to as a loss, and the unfunded liability goes up. The unfunded liability can go down, though, when experience is better for the plan than what was assumed. So in the year ending June 30, 2021, when CalPERS had a really strong return, one of the top five investment returns in their history, unfunded liability went down, went down pretty dramatically during that year. So it can go up or it can go down. It can also, as I started to mention before, go up or down based on assumptions being changed. So when the assumption changes for life expectancy is extended, that means more payments are expected to be made to retirees, higher liability, more it's going to have to be paid by the city to pay for it, higher liabilities. That creates a new unfunded liability. And that can also go in the other direction. So this can also happen for salary increases, salary increases bigger or smaller than expected, higher level of turnover. All of these things can, will over time affect unfunded liability. The biggest, though, are the ones related to investments. So actual investment return, not hitting the target, and the assumed investment return dropping down have historically been the two biggest reasons why unfunded liabilities are created. Now, these things should be monitored regularly. And as I mentioned before, paying off the unfunded liability does not mean there's not going to be any in the future. Each year, because experience, when experience is different than expected, new unfunded liability gets created. And that new unfunded liability becomes a new layer of payments over a 20-year period starting two years after the experience actually occurs. The reason there is this two-year time lag is because CalPERS is doing calculations, actuarial evaluations for a couple thousand agencies and plans across California. So they completed their June 30, 2021 actuarial evaluation reports and delivered them in August of 2022. Those reports are for the contributions you're going to be paying in the 23, 24 fiscal year. So the experience that occurred in the 2021 plan year get paid in 20, start getting paid in 23, 24 fiscal year. So there's a lag between that experience. And then get paid off over a 20-year period beginning over that time. So new amortization bases get created and added on to the others. So what we see here, the green is what your amortization payments were expected to be in the June 30, 2021 valuation report. The blue is the new amortization payments that get added on due to the bad experience in investments, the minus 7.6% that is going to be happening in June 30, 2022. So these payments that were relatively level are going to start rising dramatically and become significant compared to what they were before. This is something that happens in both directions. If we had looked at this the previous year, we would have seen a big gain and these things dropping down. But right now, we have this going on. So this is again, monitored on a regular basis to try and just keep things under control each, you know, each year as they go along. Now, the way to address this is through some combination of large, one-time additional contributions or a series of consistent annual additional contributions. The annual additional contributions might be something that you budget, that you say, okay, we're going to try and put away a little more each year than what we were expected to and have it planned. Or something that goes on an ad hoc basis based on budget surplus or other anticipated savings that are happening in the future. Unfortunately, the common theme for all of these are additional contributions. To pay for the liability, you're going to have to, and get it down and eventually be saving money. You're going to need to find some money in the short term. I'm going to take a breath for a second and see if we have any questions before I go through some examples of how these things might work, what the magnitude of contributions would be. Just want to see if you're all still there, or if I lost internet connection 15 minutes ago and I've been talking to myself.
No, we're still there. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions so far?
Well, I just wanted to ask you, the one thing I heard you say that stuck in my head right away is bad investments. Now, you're, who's investing this money for PERS? Is it the state?
Okay. I didn't actually say bad investments.
I heard that.
I said bad investment returns. And that's been due to, you know, the markets that we have seen over the last couple decades.
You're talking Wall Street? Are you talking about Wall Street?
Yeah, I mean, some of, CalPERS has their money invested, CalPERS has a lot of money, roughly half a trillion dollars. So their money is invested in just about every place you can reasonably invest money. A lot of it's invested in the stock market, both within the U.S. and around the world. A lot of it's invested in fixed income, some of it's in real estate. Some of it is in private equity, startups as they go. They have, with that much money, they are able to, they have both internal staff to deal with some of this and external advisors, some of the best in the world, to advise them on where markets are going and the places, the best places to put the money. If you look at their return pattern over the last 30 to 40 years and match it up against other public retirement systems across the country, while the numbers won't be exactly the same, you're going to see the same exact patterns for Cal, for other agencies as you see for CalPERS. CalPERS has had years where they are in the upper percentile of agencies across the country and a few where they're in the bottom percentile. So it's not that they're doing a bad job. It's that investing in the markets has become, for the last decade, been very, very difficult to do.
So I have another question. So CalPERS for California, what bank, where is it managed out of? Is it Massachusetts?
You want to reword that question?
Oh, okay. Let's see. CalPERS, I remember years ago that there was a bank in Massachusetts, I think, that came in and said they could do a good job with CalPERS. That was a long time ago. Is that what, who's managing it? Is the bank managing it somewhere in Massachusetts?
Well, they have, they have a lot of different investment advisors. There's not, there's not a, necessarily a bank that's doing it. They have a combination of investment consultants. And I don't remember who their chief investment consultants are right now. They have a chief financial officer who is in, you know, in their offices in Sacramento. They have, and so the investment, the board, on the advice of some investment consultants, sets sort of general asset allocations into asset classes and hires a series of investment managers. Different managers to invest stocks than they have to invest bonds than they have to go into private equity. Each of the investment advisors, the investments, the people in charge of doing specific investing, let's say for stocks, then has certain responsibility to, you know, within certain target groups to invest the money to get the best possible return, net of fees, within their, the instructions they've been given for what they're doing. And so they pick, for picking stocks, they, they go through a, you know, a process to find the best people who have the best track record of stock investing and have them do the stock investing. For the bonds, they've got people who've done the same thing on the bond side.
I understand. I just remember a long time ago when this happened, so.
Yeah, and again, they're, they come from all across the country. That may have been at one point, when I think of a Massachusetts bank, I usually think of State Street. And I think they were doing some work for CalPERS for a large, for a long number, large number of years. I don't remember if they're still doing it right now.
I don't know, but this just reminds me. Well, anyway, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, anybody else have any more questions, or can we continue? Okay, anybody else have any more questions or can we continue? All right, go ahead. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, so, and by the way, these, what we're coming through right here are just examples. Okay, and uh, we're coming with these examples to get direction from the board. To make sure that we, that we understand, your staff understands which approaches of these. The council would like to consider. And at what level, how much money you are willing to set aside. To, to move in these directions. So we've, we've got some numbers, uh, and we'll explain where those numbers came from. And we also have a recommendation at the end, a staff recommendation. As to how to go about this, but again, this is all looking for. Guidance and direction from council. Um, I think the, the goal is to take those directions and come back one more time. With a policy statement that actually will, you can adopt at a future meeting. So let's start with making a one-time additional contribution. And this example of one-time additional contribution. Of $5 million. So where does this $5 million come, number come from? Uh, the $5 million number wasn't just pulled randomly out of the air. Uh, you have about 2.5 million. In the city's current rainy day reserves. That your staff believes is on top of the amount that you would, that you could need to comfortably keep your reserves in good shape. Uh, in addition, uh, they believe that there's about 2.5 million. Uh, that can be made from enterprise funds. So the enterprise funds pay off their portion of the unfunded liability. Lowering overall costs together. Now where would that $5 million go? And we're looking at three potential options. First two would involve making those payments directly to CalPERS and directly paying off that unfunded liability. Now, in doing that, we're looking at two different approaches. One. Is to pay off the longest remaining amortization bases that you have. Remembering that each year, new amortization bases get created. And have a 20-year lifetime. So some of them have 20 years remaining. You have others that got created like 15 years ago. They only have about five years left. So if we pay off the law, we'll look at what happens if you pay off the longest amortization basis. And that should create the most long-term savings. Uh, next option, we'll look at paying off potentially the shortest amortization basis. This should give you a much bigger contribution reduction in the short term. But not as much savings in the long term. The third option is not to immediately send the money to CalPERS, but instead. Put the money in a section 115 pension trust. For the purpose of this analysis, we assume the trusts were earned about 5% per year. So less than CalPERS assuming to get it 6.8. Uh, we are also going to assume that the trust balance. Would be contributed to CalPERS when the combination brings the plan to 100% funded. So we'll let the amounts grow. Now, one of the reasons why. You might put money in a 115 trust, even though it's earning less investment return. Is this option tends to provide more budget flexibility. To the city. Money put into the section 115 trust. Must be used to make contributions to CalPERS. So in the model we're doing, we're assuming it's going to get paid to lower your unfunded liability at some point in the future. Until CalPERS gets it, they don't lower your contributions. But if something goes wrong. Uh, with your finances between now and then. Whether that is something happening to the economy with revenues drop. Or something happening with your uh, required expenditures. Um, you know, I, I hate to, you know, you know, talk about any of these bad things happening at once. But something happening where the city has to expend a, a large amount of money that's not in the budget. You can use the money in that 115 trust to make your regular contributions for that year. So any money that's in the 115 trust, while it can't go back to your general fund. It could make your full contribution to CalPERS for that year. Creating money that you don't have to spend from the general fund that can be used for some other purpose. So that provides more budget flexibility moving into the future. Uh, for the purpose of this, we're focusing on the miscellaneous plans. Anytime you make additional contributions to CalPERS. CalPERS wants to know which plan you're putting it in. And actually which amortization bases you're paying off. Uh, so we're, we're defining each of that here with the miscellaneous one. Now, what the red here is the baseline, which is the. Projection we showed before, contributions going, unfunded liability going up. They get paid off over time. The yellow. Is the option where you make that $5 million contribution. And then pay off the longest amortization base. So you can see that it's slowly causing the unfunded liability go down uh, for a prolonged period of time. The, stop that. The uh, light purple, pinkish purple number is paying the shortest amortization base. So again, immediately a $5 million reduction. But then that amount goes away, the difference goes away a little more quickly. Again, less savings. Over time, the purple making a payment to the 115 trust. Uh, has a bigger savings. Uh, you know, dropping your unfunded liability a little bit faster. Terms of getting to 100%, the percentages. You end up getting to 100% the fastest. With putting the money in the 115 trust, the reason for that, we'll show in just a moment. Is because you keep making contributions at the higher level, as if that money's not there because it's not in CalPERS. So you keep making bigger contributions that pays the whole thing off. The paying off the longest base pays, gets it. Gets to 100% next fastest. And going with the shortest base does it the slowest or about where you would be right now. This is what happens to your contributions. The red is where you are right now. It's also, you'll notice the dark purple is in the same place as the red. Until you hit 100% funded. In about 2034. And use that money and pay it to CalPERS at that point. When you would see a significant reduction in contributions. Down to just paying for the current year service each year, a normal cost. The yellow is paying off the longest base. So we see some significant reduction of about 300 to 400,000 a year. And it keeps that kind of reduction all the way until the plan is 100% funded in about 2041. Um, the light purple. Uh, is a bigger contribution, about 600,000 per year savings in contributions. But it only lasts for about, looks like about 13 years. So bigger reduction in the short term. Compared to a medium, you know, less of a reduction, but some reduction versus no reduction for a while and bigger, you know, eventually more. Terms of absolute numbers of how much you would save. Biggest savings, paying off the longest base gets you about 5 million in savings. You paid five, you saved it to sort of 10 total, so a net of about 5 million savings. So every dollar, dollar you invested gets you back about two. Um, shortest base gives about two and a half million in savings. So not nearly as much, but much bigger contribu, bigger contribution reduction for the next decade or so. Uh, making the 115 trust payment doesn't have you any savings in the short term. Uh, but gives you a lot more flexibility and ends out saving about $4 million over time. So not quite as big as paying off the longest space, but more than paying off the shortest space. So that's one option with one-time payment. And how these might work. And you don't have to pick one or the other. You can do a combination of these. The other thing we looked at. And again, just reiterating. Longest base gives you the maximum long-term savings. Shortest base is the largest short-term contribution reduction. And the 115 trucks maximizes your budget flexibility over the next decade. Second option is to make bigger payments in the short term. We're looking at this in terms of fresh starts. Now what a fresh start is. Is taking all the amortization bases, or some are all the amortization bases that you currently have. Combining them. And paying them off over a shorter period of time. Think of it like uh, combining all of your debt you might have, your home payment, your car payment, and others into one big consolidated loan. And then picking a shorter period to pay it all off. The shorter period uh, gives you. More savings by not paying as much interest. So for the purpose of this analysis. We assumed the $5 million contribution was made. We assumed it was being made to pay off the longest amortization base. And uh, we assumed a fresh start was going to happen and we looked at potentially doing it over five years, 10 years, or a 15-year period. Now these fresh starts that you do, if you do one. Can be either an actual fresh start. Where you go to CalPERS and say, we want to take all of our bases. Combine them and pay them off over, just to pick a number, 15 years. If you do that, uh, you are locked in on that payment schedule. You cannot then come back a couple of years later, when something goes wrong and say, oh, uh, we didn't mean it. We'd like to go back to the old schedule. Uh, that's why uh, some agencies are using what's known as a virtual fresh start. Where you don't actually tell CalPERS you're doing this. But you use something like our software to calculate how much the fresh start would be over another period, let's say 10 years. Make the payments at that higher level. Uh, and continue doing that as long as you can. But if you have a problem and can't continue. You stop making the extra payments. Go back down the schedule that CalPERS has given you. And then can use the extra money during, you know, a slow period and revenue slowdown or something else. So uh, we looked at again, the five, sorry, the five, the 10 and the 15 year. And unfunded liability should not surprise you. To see that the five-year amortization gets paid off, goes down to zero at five years. 10 years amortization gets zero at 10 years, 15-year amortization gets to zero at 15 years. Now, one thing that's interesting, the 15-year amortization slightly longer. Than the amount that you're, you would be paying off. If you just paid the 5 million without these extra, you know, switching it off. So the remaining amortization period is about 14 years right now. 15 years would actually be extending it slightly. Uh, normally, CalPERS is not okay with extending your amortization period. But if you do it together with making an additional payment like the $5 million payment. Then the combination is lower. Than what the payments are lower than what they would have been without the combination and CalPERS will let that happen. The funded percentage, again, 100% in five, 10 and 15, and you're basically moving from where you are, the, the. Amount, the 80% number, the 70 with 5%, 5 million extra gets you to back to 80. And then moving up during that period on a relatively level uh, pace. To do that though, this is the one that gets a little bit scary. These are what contributions would be. Um, the, just as uh, something to look at, the green here. Is without the 5 million and without a fresh start, this is the payment schedule that you are currently on. Going from about 1.75 million. Up to a little more than three. And again, this is just the miscellaneous plan, not both of them combined. Um, and then moving on, that's the dark green. The yellow is what we had with the 5 million. Longest base, as we said, about 600,000 a year savings all the way through. The light purple here is the five-year, basically saying, oh, we'll pay it off over five years. That's going to jump your contributions up significantly. Uh, to about almost 4 million a year, just for the miscellaneous plan. So this is a pretty significant increase, just to show you. Cause yeah, I mean, I guess all else being equal, you'd love to get rid of your debt in five years. Uh, the problem is, it's an extremely difficult thing to do and very expensive to get that done. The 10-year period is the one right here in dark purple. It's basically somewhere between what you're paying, a little more than what you're paying right now. Uh, in the beginning, but because it's level. It's going to end out being less than the peak of what you would have paid before. Uh, the 15 is, is basically compared to the, sort of the yellow line, which is where you were with the 5 million. It's sort of stretching this out. Instead of having the up and down, it's making it relatively flat all the way across. And overall, pretty similar schedule. So what that does in terms of savings, on top of the 5 million we saw before. The 15-year. Basically doesn't save you, it actually costs you about a quarter of a million dollars over the 15-year period. The 10 saves about 2.4 million. Uh, the 15 saves almost another five, or the five-year saves almost another 5 million on top of it. But again, very expensive to get to that each year in terms of cash flow. So um, these are different things and how they would work. Talked with staff. And Tabitha had a recommendation. Uh, I know Tabitha, whether you want to talk about it, you want me to talk about it.
All right, I'll let you talk about this and then I'm going to actually talk about how we're going to specifically fund those recommendations.
Okay. So uh, the recommendation here. Um, uh, is, is basically a, a very solid plan to try and address this unfunded liability relatively quickly. So first, take the first 5 million that we talked about before. And use it to pay off the longest amortization base to the miscellaneous plan. This will be that $5 million in savings on, on. Over the next uh, 20 or so years um, that we showed before. In addition. The recommendation is to take another 2.5 million. Um, and put that into the section 115 trust. This will be able to be used as a rainy day fund. Tor, for the pension. And earned, the nice thing about a section 115 trust. Is because the money is being used to pay for uh, pension benefits. That money can be invested uh, with different restrictions, fewer restrictions. Than the way that your internal funds can be invested. So your internal funds are required to be invested. In short-term, high-quality government bonds. Uh, so you're basically earning a little bit more than expected inflation. Uh, basically the, the Fed interest rate somewhere around 3% probably right now. If you put the money in a section 115 trust. Uh, you can invest in a variety of different things, a little more diversified. I, I would recommend it still be conservative. But even a conservative investment should allow you to earn an extra 1 to 2% more. On top of what you'd be earning on your internal money. So uh, instead of earning maybe three, you'd earn five, or instead of maybe four, you earn six, depending on how high the, the Fed continues to raise interest rates. So this would hopefully create some extra money to make these payments a little bit faster. Um, the second part of the recommendation. Is to make, is to make an actual 15-year fresh start with CalPERS. At the same time, this additional 5 million is being put into it. So that would put you. Next to this. Uh, the purple line that we saw here. So level out your payments over this period. Uh, but. Do a virtual 10-year fresh start. So basically, to the extent that city finances can uh, can accomplish this. Go with the 10-year, try and make payments at this darker purple line, the, this, this amount going for the 10-year period. If uh, tough times that the recession really does hit in the next year or so, as expected. Slow it down for a little while, drop down to light purple line. And then when things go back to normal, move back up and make the higher payments. So what this would do. Is we're actually showing all this here in the graph. Um, the red line is if you follow just the straight 15-year. Payment, the 10, this is following, the yellow line is following the 10-year fresh start. So unfunded liability. Dropping down immediately by seven and a half million because of the money in the 115 trust and the, the pension fund. And then getting to 100% funded. and then getting to a hundred percent funded in a little more than, in about a decade. Um, unfunded liability, again, moving up very quickly. And the total contributions, and this is all plans combined here, both miscellaneous and safety. So instead, the green line is where we were looking to have things go if you hadn't done anything. The yellow line, which is the ten-year amortization payment, the virtual fresh start, a little bit higher in the beginning, but after a few years, when the green line would have accelerated up, your payments would stay relatively steady. Want the big caveat here, that this assumes that CalPERS hits their target moving forward. And the one thing I can guarantee is they're not going to hit their target. They'll beat it some years, they'll miss it others. So this wonderful straight line is going to get a little jaggedy over time. Uh, but this is the, you know, the green line would have also hopped up and down accordingly. So the savings should still be a relatively good measure of where things, uh, of, of how this plan might work. Which is pretty much all we had. So Tabitha?
Thank you, Ira.
Everybody still with us?
We just need a minute of technical help here.
Okay, you want me to stop sharing or so you can share something else?
You can stop sharing. We're good. Thank you.
I, I just, how do we know? I mean, this is a long-term projection, and it's making the assumption eventually. How do we know that we're on this course, that we're going to stay on this course, just going downhill for, or I guess it's uphill and downhill, but how do we know it's not going to change?
We, it will change. I mean, and I think that's one of the things that Ira pointed out is that we know it's like any target, six point eight percent, we're never going to hit that precisely on the nose every year, year in, year out. It's going to be higher and it's going to be lower. So it will change every year. So one of the things that we have to, as a city, commit to is not just what we're, we're talking about doing here, which is really just an initial start to a plan, but looking at every year and making sure that we're still on the right course, and we will adjust as we go. I mean, it's, it has changed. It's been up and down in the last two years. As Ira said, you know, it's in the top five of highest and lowest as far as rate of returns. So I think if anything, we can guarantee is that it will not stay the same, and we, it, it, it's that unfortunate thing that if, in a mortgage, like he was talking about, you know that you owe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you know, you know, if you make extra payments, you're going to pay it off in this amount, and if you've got a fixed rate, it's really simple. This is not that animal. This will change, um, the interest will change, the amounts will change, and we just have to be willing to commit to looking at it and doing the best we can every year. I know that's not a great message.
No, I just wonder how we got here in the first place, you know, what happened that made it, you know, we were, I would assume that we were floating along, doing just fine, and then all of a sudden, bang, something happened, and now we're out of sync, and we're out of sync until two, twenty fifty.
Yeah, and lots of things happened, and, and Ira can certainly um is better at explaining this, but starting in about the late nineties, early two thousand, CalPERS was actually overfunded. It had more money than it needed. It was in great shape. And that's when they started offering additional um benefits, and entities throughout California were actually kind of getting on the bandwagon of offering better, more um lucrative uh pension programs in order to encourage and recruit employees. Um, and that wasn't so bad, except that the dot-com bubble burst right after that, and that was kind of the first of a series of investment losses that really hit CalPERS hard. And they weren't expecting it, they weren't prepared for it from an investment standpoint. And, you know, things from there on got really tough. Then you hit the Great Recession, which really reset for several years. Um, they took big hits and big losses, and, and, and not just CalPERS. Every pension system in America had very similar results um and never got out of it. The other thing that happened, and if you look at historically, the plan, if you look at graphs and stuff, there's graphs out that, that, that will show you that twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, there were two, I think, two and a half employees for every paying into the system for every employee that was retired, that is now the opposite. So we have less, our, our payrolls in local government, we looked like we were on this great trajectory, that they were growing great in the late nineties, early two thousands, and we stopped growing. I mean, the Great Recession sort of stopped, you know, many, many organizations just basically put a hiring freeze in place for years. And so there's less people coming into the system to pay towards those that are retiring. So and that's probably, that's just a few of the things that went wrong. Ira, you're welcome to add to that if you've got better information.
Um, yeah, well, let me actually help with uh part of it. Um, just to this picture uh on investment returns that I showed last time. Uh, the green bars are the investment returns on a year-by-year basis. The red line is CalPERS assumptions. So as Tabitha mentioned, during the eighties and nineties, things went along pretty well. CalPERS beat their returns almost every year. Uh, dot-com bubble burst. And, yeah, the timing of that was right after a lot of benefits started increasing. Cal, many, most plans in CalPERS were what they referred to as super funded at that point, meaning that there was enough money to pay for all the employees in the plan and retirees for the rest of their lives without any additional contributions if things went as expected. So they were, the cities were not making contributions, most, many employee groups were not making contributions. And then uh they bumped up benefits, still thought it was going to be okay, and it was going to be free. Uh, and then CalPERS started, you know, the markets crashed, CalPERS started losing money. And even when they had positive returns, they were low and weak. The markets have been crazy in the last decade, up and down all the time. The assumed rate of return is the red line, as it's been slowly decreasing. Uh, the reason that's been coming down across time is because the investments are a combination of stocks and bonds. Bond yields, fixed income, back in nineteen eighty, uh, were about fifteen percent uh and have slowly been, and have been coming down pretty much in a straight line since then, bottoming out in two thousand and close to zero. So all of that, uh, you know, some of that were things that, in hindsight, might have been uh, you know, able to figure out, like the, like giving better benefits may not have been the ideal thing to do at the time, even though everybody thought, oh, the dot-com bubble, the dot-com boom is going to keep going forever. Um, in hindsight, probably not a good thing to do, but other things, uh, like the uh fixed income, the interest rates coming down over time is not something that anyone really had control over. Um, now that they're starting to go up again, uh, we may see, you know, we may see something a little bit different. Uh, but again, this is, most of this were things that were outside of CalPERS' control and your agency's control. The fact that you have an unfunded liability, and again, you are pretty close to the middle of where agencies are all across California, uh, I think a little bit above the fiftieth percentile. So this is not something that you should be blaming on past city councils or past staff. It's happening to agencies all across California and all across the country, uh, and largely because of what's been happening with the markets. Um, so uh, part of what uh the tough thing that you have to do now is try and take something, uh, try and deal with something when a number of the variables are outside your control. But that's going to be happening anyway. So you realize there's going to be a little bit of volatility, but you make a plan that will get you to a better place than if you just let the, you know, the bouncing happen. And I don't know if that's a comforting thought, but it's uh, you know, you, you know, I think the plan that Tabitha is bringing up is one that allows you to have some control uh to the extent possible within your budget uh towards addressing this and addressing costs and lowering your costs over time.
And counsel, I'll just also add uh that when Jerry Brown became governor um several years ago, he rolled back pensions, right? So we are new employees that have not, are not classic PERS members, that haven't been in the PERS system for years, come in at a lower pension benefit rate with the hope of stabilizing pensions over time in California. So there are some long-term fixes built into the system now. It's just going to take probably another ten years for those to really come to full fruition. But I will say that we are, with the turnover that local governments have seen during the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, we are seeing, you know, the rate of our employee group shifting to what we call PEPRA, or Employees Under That Pension Reform Plan, with that lower benefit package more rapidly than we thought. So there is, there is some stability in the future that will come from that as well.
Okay. So I really wanted to just start and talk about the seven point five million dollars that Ira mentioned as far as kind of that initial funding of our plan to move forward. And I realize there's lots of numbers here, but I wanted to talk about where it's coming from and give you an indication that we can afford this amount, and it is something that is probably a good investment for the city to make. Um, I'm going to start on the left-hand side and kind of work across to the right. We're really talking about pulling funds from three of our funds, the general fund, our water fund, and our wastewater fund, which is where most of our employees are being paid out of, so it's appropriate. The column just over one from that left-hand side is our current estimates for fiscal year twenty twenty-two fund balance. And I will say that as a whole, I am, I am pleasantly surprised coming to work for Arcata that these are the balances that you have. Your general fund in particular um is solid. You have a good, you know, a good amount of reserve. You're not rich by any means. Um, there's not a lot of excess funding, but you're in a good, solid financial place. And so you are in a position where I, I feel at this point that, but that we can look at making these investments in the pension program. The one-time pension payment is that five million dollars that we talked about. We pay it upfront to CalPERS. It would be half from the general fund and then split between water and wastewater. The second from the right-hand side over is placing two and a half million dollars in that section one fifteen trust as a reserve, and that's the, the flexibility when Ira was talking about putting money into a section one fifteen. It's money we can use towards pension expense at any point in time. Um, so if any year we really needed to break into it, we could, but it sets it aside and commits it to the pension program, and it also allows us to earn a little bit higher interest, which is going to be really important in sort of battling this, this growing pension liability. And then on the far right-hand side is sort of where we would be if we make these contributions um at the beginning of this next budget or fiscal year. Um, and I would like to point out that in every fund, you have a good, solid amount of reserve, and you have, you still have funds available for other purposes and even other emergencies. It puts you in a good place. Um, just to kind of put it in perspective, because I'm going to move to the next page, and we'll talk about what an appropriate fund balance reserve is. Your general fund here is ending with forty-six percent overall, and your reserve is um about thirty percent. So you're good, and then your, your other funds are really setting aside money for capital, which is going to be what's going to push both your water and your wastewater fund going forward. So this kind of sponsors, this is a little bit of a side um sideways, you know, a hole that I wanted to go into, but I think it's really important because we want to make sure that we're still setting reserves, particularly in our general fund, at a point where we're caring forward and we're planning for the future, and that we're able to, to really weather some ups and downs in addition to not just the, the CalPERS pension. Um, but we know, looking at the markets right now, that there's more talk about recessions, there's a lot of volatility. Um, there's even a lot of volatility in Humboldt County, and so I think it's important for us to, to kind of focus on that and make sure that the council and the communities um comfortable with where we set that general fund reserve. This happens to be kind of an, uh, it's pulled from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is kind of the the, the association and the bible that everybody goes to for financial information, not just in the U.S., but also Canada. And at the top, you can see they have basically four different levels of um kind of where they would recommend you set your general fund reserves. The minimal one, if you have low-end risk, is two months' worth of expenditures or sixteen point six percent. Low to moderate is seventeen to twenty-five percent, or up to three months of expenditures. Moderate to high gets you up to twenty-six to thirty-five percent of your general fund expenses for the annual year, or four months of expenditures, and then high is six months of expenditures. Um, the second half of the slide here, you'll see some of the factors to consider, and there's actually a pretty detailed spreadsheet where you can go through and rate yourself. I went through those, and I have to say, based on um my kind of cursory evaluation, the city of Arcade is in pretty good shape. You have a couple of, of areas that are probably, you know, higher, higher risk than average, which is the risk of extreme events, and we've seen that just probably in the last six months um and year. And then really sort of that growth, you've got growth in expenditures, but we're not seeing a lot of growth in our economy. And capital projects is one that we want to note, but the good thing about the city um is that, as we've talked about in our mid-year budget review and stuff, we're really depending on and using those grants and outside resources to pay for those, so we're not dependent on our general fund reserves to pay for capital projects. So this kind of gives you a breakdown of what that would equate to as far as dollars. Keeping in mind, we're currently at four point eight million dollars in reserves. That puts us at a really solid, right in the middle of the recommendations. Again, I would rate us in, you know, somewhere between low and moderate risks, so I feel like we, we are in a good, solid place with that. Um, even accounting for the increase, the estimated increase in expenditures for twenty twenty-four, which would go up to about nineteen point five million dollars for our general fund, you'll still stay at three months' reserves or twenty-five percent. Um, I would like to mention here that, that, that two and a half million dollars that we would put in one fifteen trust allows us to sort of add to that bottom line, so you would actually could add a million and a half that you'd be taking from your, your general fund for that one fifteen trust. And that would put you at about thirty-four percent funded or above the, the three point six. So it kind of gets us to that next level without actually having to put any more money into the reserve. But you also, it may be something that the council wants to consider moving another one point one million dollars over to the reserve, which would basically give, put you at the thirty percent and give you that section one fifteen trust in addition to that. Again, it just really puts you in a solid financial position um and allows us to kind of weather those, those a, a better, and it would still leave about three million dollars of basically unallocated general fund, funds for you to have some flexibility in your annual budgets or potentially to do a larger project. Um, the other one that we talked about was this whole idea of the fresh start re-amortizing, so we can flatten out that pay, those annual payments on, on a regular basis to fifteen years committing to, to Cal um PERS, but targeting paying that off in ten years. So another way for us to reduce that cost, get that interest savings that was closer to, I think, four, four million or two and a half million dollars. We currently have about one and a half million dollars that's been built up in an internal trust for our other post-employment benefits. It happens to be retiree health insurance. This is a, another employment benefit that is a liability, but it is a much lower amount. It does not, we are not being charged the six point eight interest every year, and what we pay out, we've been able to pay that out of pocket on an annual basis as we go. Um, I would suggest, and I would recommend that the council consider taking three hundred dollars, three hundred, excuse me, three hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years and commit that to that annual pay down. Um, what it basically means is that you, as a council, would get us through the next five years, and then the council after that would have to figure out how we come up with that additional payment for the last ten years to meet that ten-year virtual fresh start. Um, so just a reminder of kind of what we're looking for tonight. We're not asking you to make any, any specific directions or decisions, but we would like some direction that we could bring back to you um as part of the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, with some ideas on whether you really want to maximize those long-term um interest savings, or you'd prefer to really focus on reducing our annual contribution cost, or balance, which, or the staff recommendation, which is trying to balance both of those. And that if you wanted to reset the general fund reserves to a different level than where they're at now, thirty or thirty-five percent of cash set aside. And with that, we'll take questions.
All right, we're going to um take some questions. We're going to start from this end, go this way, have an initial talk, we'll open up to public comment, and then we'll come back.
So there's so many numbers, my head is spinning.
I'm so sorry.
I apologize if this is a stupid question, but you said you came in and we were at thirty percent, but then on the charts that you were showing, it says current at twenty-seven percent with regards to reserves. And so somewhere, I got lost in that three percent.
So actually, what it is, is it's the difference between, you base your reserves on your annual expenditures for your general fund. So the, the 30% that we were talking about is based on the 2022, '23 expenditures, and we're looking at the next budget year. Unfortunately, we're looking at our budget going up, and so I did an estimate of where that would put us.
Which would be the 27%.
Yeah. So that's where that is. There's also our total, our total general fund balance is, is closer to 46% of our total expenditures, but you haven't reserved or set aside all of that for rainy day funds, just the 4.8 million.
Thank you.
Yes, there's a lot of numbers, I apologize.
So I, I just think, one of the things I would think about is definitely going into the 115 trust. That's something I, I would think about. And I made this note, but I'm not too sure. I just checked off the 10-year fresh, you know, fresh start. But I'm just thinking, if we put so much money forward, you know, whatever it was, you made some recommendations, and then we went to the 115 trust to carry us forward. Anyway, that's my thought.
And I think, I think both of those ideas are, are what we're looking at. I mean, I think we're, and again, on an ongoing basis, we're probably going to try to hit all of these on some level and use all the tools available to us. So yeah, I think.
Wait, I'm just, so if we did the 10 as opposed to 15, it would be a good problem to have if we could pay more. That's what we're doing, right? We're like, kind of doing a, just in case, but if nothing bad happens, then we will actually pay more than what we are committing.
So I think the idea, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we start with this $5 million down, right? And then we do a reset to 15 years, but we, that OPEB fund that Tabitha was talking about, that extra $1.5 million, we use that to make the 10-year payment, even though we're on a 50 years, a 15-year schedule. So we're overpaying, so we're paying the 10-year amount, but we're having the 15-year payment. So if one year, we're like, you know, we can't do it, then we're, there's no harm, no foul, we can just pay the 15.
Yeah, so that, what he was, when Ira was talking about the virtual, we're, we're going to commit technically, legally to the 15, but we're going to strive for the 10-year. And as you said, there's no reason that if, any year we have extra funding, or you could even set a policy where if you end the year and your general fund has a surplus, X amount either goes to the 115 trust, or we automatically pay additional contribution. And so there's no reason we can't try to make it less than 10, but 10 seems like a big jump right now.
I don't really have any questions, just a few things. First of all, thank you for basically spreading this out over three meetings. You know, that's, that's really helpful, so that we had the, you know, kind of the shock last time, and then today we're problem-solving. And I think they're really, the hard part will be when we actually sit down with the budget and see where we have to sacrifice. I think that's where, that'll be the tough one. And I also just want to acknowledge the staff and past councils for helping us to be, you know, for you to be able to step into a pretty decent situation. So we're, I appreciate that. I do, I like the idea of, I like your recommendation and, you know, the 115 trust, because it's more flexible. I like that we're basically refinancing and committing to 15 years, but also really working and committing to trying to do our best to pay it off in 10, because I feel like without, you know, without that accountability of the refi in the 15 years, we could have the best of intentions, but we wouldn't really be locked into something. So I think it's a really good balance, and that's all I have.
All right. So Tabitha, I just want to, first of all, thank you so much for spending some time with me, like really getting into the nitty-gritty of this. I realize that this is not a very glamorous subject that we're getting into right now, and it's more nuts-and-bull stuff, but I definitely, part of my platform was fiscal responsibility, so I'm really glad that we have very, you know, good direction. Feel like I'm the Ben Wyatt to everybody's Leslie Knope, if you will. I would like to thank Janet and Andrea, of course, for having the foresight for that OPEB fund and for really keeping our reserves. So yeah, I mean, just got to understand that these are tough decisions that we're going to make. This is not maybe going to win us very many popularity contests. It's, you know, we're putting aside a large chunk of money, and it's going to really kind of affect other things that we're able to do. But the good thing is, is that, you know, we can revisit it, we can, we don't have to make any decisions until we see how it's going to affect the final budget, but I do think that they are really strong recommendations, and I think that 10 years down the road, you know, other council members are going to say, wow, they really like, took one for the team and, and really worked out a setup. The things that I want to make sure that we prioritize is that, you know, we're at the end of a third-year contract with our employees, so we just want to prioritize meeting those commitments that we've made to all our employees. And I would also like to prioritize our fiscal policy to make sure that we're setting aside 30% of our operating revenue every year, just to keep us, you know, kind of in that medium-to-high, moderate-to-high reserves. So that's all I have to say right now. I'd like to open it up for a public comment.
Oh, can we take a break? Can we go to the bathroom?
Um.
Or not? That's okay.
I, can we, can we, can we get through public comment while we're on a roll and then go to the bathroom?
Sure.
Okay.
Go ahead, Gregory.
Okay, the budget for the city of Arcata is $79 million, is that correct? You have a shortfall of $13.8 million. You also have a deficit of $3.3 million that's outside the pension. So what's most shocking is the wastewater treatment part of it, that you're going to borrow money from the waste, I guess you're taking money from the wastewater treatment plant, is that what I heard? One's shaking their head and the other one's not saying anything. But basically, the wastewater treatment plant, what, Phase 1 was supposed to be $30 million a couple of years ago, and when you guys voted in the fall, you, it was just short of $44 million, and then two weeks later, you got the engineering at $2 million. So let's say roughly 46. Now it's up to $62 million, and no one's even asked the question like, how did it go from what you voted in the fall, which was a lot higher than what was talked about a few years ago? And now we're talking about borrowing money or taking money from the wastewater treatment plant. And also, I would say that I'm probably the only person from the public that was in part of the Coastal Commission in the fall, and the staff was pretty assertive about coming in with Phase 2, which was approximately maybe another 40-some million dollars from the wastewater treatment fund, too. So there's a lot of like, questions about this. No one's asking any questions about the wastewater treatment plant, like why, why did it all of a sudden go up in price from just what you guys approved in the fall? I mean, this is the whole key from the standpoint of, you know, the Coastal Commission asked for a report to be done about where that plant's going to go in the future. A lot of people are saying that was the gateway. Where is the, where is the, where are progress in that aspect of it? And so, you know, it's, there's a lot of things about the wastewater treatment, and I think, I mean, someone needs to be clear about, are you taking money from that source? And even, even if you go beyond that, we have a $13.8 million deficit in our budget. So you're asking like, you're going to, you're going to pull $5 million to pay off the pension, I mean, to help out on the pension, but you know, that's going to affect, how are you going to make up on the budget? How are you going to make up on the 3.3 million that you already have a deficit? So seems like you got a big problem with a deficit, and no one's exactly explaining how you're going to address that. I know, the private sector, I had, I had two bosses from Wharton School Business with the MBAs, and they would be all over this budget trying to save money. I'm just surprised that whenever anything comes up here, everyone 100% always votes for it, and no one asks the question like, can we afford it? And maybe you're not aware of that, but you're always voting for things, and we're, we're in debt.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Alex Bauton, and I'm ceding my time to Fred Weiss.
Hello, thank you. I don't think I'm going to need six minutes. I'm going to speak in generalities, not specifics, because there's too many specifics. I appreciate very much the presentation from you and from Ira. The first question is, there's, is, is tonight, there's going to be a decision on the direction? Tonight, actually? Or can this be done at a future meeting or in a few months? I'd like to get some feedback on that. And the idea of having a task force look at this, it's a huge decision. You know this, I'm not trying to tell you things that you don't already know. You're making decisions that essentially have an effect for 25 or 30 or 35 years. The, I have some ideas, and I think a task force would flesh out whether these ideas are suitable. And I don't mean an independent task force, I mean the inclusive of, of city staff. And you've heard this from me before, I regard Arcata as unique, and I think we can, might have a unique solution here. I can get into that more in detail. At the risk of trying to tell you how to do your jobs, I don't think you can possibly make a decision on direction tonight. There's way too many factors. I, again, I appreciated the presentation, but from the point of view of making financial decisions, I, again, I'm sorry if it sounds like I'm telling you your job, and you know this, I'm not, I'm not, there's so much more information that's not here. The council member Stillman alluded to some of them. There, there's the, there's a section about the risks of the future. We don't know what the future is going to bring, obviously. So to make a decision based upon what seems likely now, I think is, could get us into more trouble in the future. So that's my two cents. The, if I can help, I know I've got a lot on my plate in other regards, but this is a huge situation here, and there's a lot of smart people around that I'd be happy to be a part of that group. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Anybody else have any public comment on this? Do you have anybody online?
There is no online public comment for the segment.
All right, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and hash it out some more. more. We're on the screen.
Oh, probably.
All right, here we are. Welcome back. Okay, I just want to remind the council that we are not making any final decisions tonight. The final decisions will come at budget setting. So what we're doing right now is making a recommendation based on the extensive presentation that we have just seen. I think there were some really solid recommendations provided, but let's hear it.
I don't have any further questions. I think, as you stated, we're just giving direction as to what to pursue and we will, you know, suss that out and go over the final budget. So I'm, I'm happy to proceed with, I will, do we need a motion on this? So I will, I will make a motion to accept the presentation and to direct staff to move forward with the recommended path as put forth in the presentation.
I'll second it. All right, we have a motion by council member at Goncalazar and a second by council member Stillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes.
I guess I could have waited that long.
Thank you so much, Tabitha, again. Really appreciate the time that you spent with me. I would encourage the staff to make a little appointment to get some fiscal love because she really knows her stuff. All right, we are on to new business. It is time to appoint up to two new members to the Economic Development Committee for terms expiring September 30th, 2024, and one new member to the Planning Commission for a term expiring March 31st, 2027. Is there any discussion that we want to have?
Well, I would move to appoint resident Christopher P. Alberts and resident Sophia Ross to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on the Economic Development Committee? All right, so motion and a second. We have a motion by council member Stillman and a second by council member White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations to...
I haven't voted, but I just wanted to thank the candidates and they're very qualified, so it was really an easy decision to make, and I, I vote yes.
Excellent.
No, I was impressed because with their planning background, I'm thinking, oh, it's wonderful. They'll be in economic development, helping with planning and so forth because we really need it, especially after our last conversation, meeting thing, and, and I'm hoping to eventually, it would be like a place that they eventually could learn so much and may want to come on to the Planning Commission in the future.
All right, so let's move on to make a motion to appoint a member of the Planning Commission.
Well, I would move for Joel Yodowitz for the Arcata Planning Commission, to appoint him.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from council member Stillman and a second from council member White. Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this? All right, all in favor?
Thank you, yes, in favor, and thank you. I think he'll be, do us very well.
Hold on, council member at Goncalazar, do you want to...
I suppose that he is immensely qualified, so we are lucky to have him, and I vote yes.
Yes, great, great candidates all around.
I'm just wondering if, because I don't know that the public had an opportunity here, any of the qualifications, because they didn't have access? Do we want...
It was stripped.
It was, okay, great, thank you.
Fantastic. All right, Tabitha, you're back up. Public hearing on proposed master fee schedule for fiscal year 2023-24.
So we will have the presentation and then we'll open the public hearing. So just wanted to do kind of an overview of the process and the procedure that we're bringing forward to you. First of all, if you went through the consolidated fee schedule in your packet, you'll notice that it was about 40 pages and you had a red line and a clean version, so there's quite a bit there. Although we're consolidating a number of fees into one schedule, so it's all in one place, so there's one place to go, you'll notice that most, many of the fees in there either were not being increased and/or there were others that already council had taken direction on that they increased outside of this fee schedule. And that would be, you know, the, the best example is probably your water and wastewater fees that went through a 218 process, they've gone through, and as of July 1st, those would increase whether we do this process or not, but we want to make sure they're all in one place and they're easily accessible for the public, which is why we're doing the public, we did public notice, we made the fees available to the public ahead of time. You have a public hearing where folks can come and talk about and provide you feedback on those fees. And then in addition to that, government code requires a waiting period for those fees to go into effect and it ranges between a minimum of 30 and 60 days. Just to make sure that we cover everything and we're consistent and the fees all get increased at one time, we're going to do that July 1st, 2023, which is also when your water and wastewater fees were set to raise. So it just makes it consistent and makes it a little easier on staff that we know when those all need to be in place. Just a reminder of why we're doing this, the, the goal behind looking at your fees is to recover the cost of providing the services to the public. And, and fees are different than taxes, they're not the same. Basically, fees collect on services that are provided for, for the, the benefit of individuals. And probably a good example of this is your, your development and planning fees are one of the areas that you probably saw, that there were significant changes in those. Kind of the default, if there isn't another mechanism, like the wastewater fees that had a whole rate study that was done prior, in prior years, we use an inflationary index and the city has incorporated the annual change in the CPIU, which is all urban consumers for the US city average, and it's the annual change. And the graph up here, and it's also in the staff report, is really to show sort of the, the range. You can see that for many years, for about five or six years there, it was pretty consistent and bounced between about one and under two and a half percent. Everybody's pretty aware that we've had significant inflation in the last two years. And eight percent, I know, seems rather large. Part of the reason for that is that we, other indexes have been a little lower. You'll see indexes that show it at seven, seven and a half percent. But because of the way these indexes work, you'll see that in 2021, it was only 4.7, which again, was a big increase. I'm not denying that, we all, we all saw that in the, what we paid for our goods and services. But it kind of pushed some of that increase for this particular index to 2022. So we did, we did increase fees in many cases with that eight percent increase annually. So just to kind of talk about some of the other methods that were used, we've already talked about the independent fee study for water and wastewater user rates. We will also sometimes use market rates for these, what the, the market can bear, and that can be less than the increase in CPIU if it's appropriate. Facility rentals is one of those areas. We chose to only use three-quarters of the CPI for this year, and even that was, is a big increase, but we also wanted to make sure that we were consistent with what's happening in other, other surrounding areas as far as the facilities and that we're, we're staying competitive. Many of the fines, penalties and vehicular violations are tied to state and other laws, and so we, we don't increase those outside of those mechanisms. And then councils will make decisions to consciously subsidize fees. And public transportation, ridership is one of those. Almost everywhere that is subsidized somewhere else, it doesn't pay for itself and you want to encourage use of those. Youth programs are often subsidized too, to encourage use of those recreation and community programs. And then economic development, a lot of times you'll, you'll help subsidize programs as they get off the ground to encourage those in your, in your community. I'm not going to go through this, but this is just a list of all the fees that did not see increases in the current schedule. This is your revenue budget total, $65.2 million, and I wanted to just graphically show, you know, intergovernmental, we talked about this, this is many of those grants and funding that you get from state and federal government. Taxes is the next largest block and charges for service is really your water and wastewater fees. So this, the fees that we're talking about tonight are the charges for services, oops, let me go back. Charges for services, license and permits, a small portion of use of property, and then there's a little tiny bit in other revenue. It's about 25% of that total, 65.2 million, or 16.2 million dollars. And again, even here, water and wastewater rates make up about 82% of that total fees that are charged directly to individuals who are benefiting from those. And we can certainly open it up for questions from the council.
Does anybody have any questions? I think that was pretty straightforward. Let's just take some public comment.
About a week ago, I, I read a pretty interesting article in the New York Times. New York Times is hardly a conservative paper. And they had an article about, there's quite a bit of younger folks from the state of California that are moving out of state to red states, and they're moving there because, you know, things like building permits are a lot less, taxes are a lot less. And so I guess my argument sort of against this is that you're basically hurting those folks that, by doing this, because you're raising all these rates and it'll affect housing. And that's part of the basic problem with all this is that we're not, you know, balancing our budget like we should. We're not living with, in our, our means. If we were, if this was our money and we were at home, it would be a whole different thing. But it seems like with government, you know, it's a whole different set of rules that you can just kick it down the road. And I'm not picking on just the city of Arcata, it's affecting the federal government, where $31.1 trillion, I think is the deficit, state of California is $22.5 billion. And state of California had a, had a lot of extra money and now all of a sudden they haven't. So I don't think they're going to be quite throwing around grant monies so much. We've already seen some pretty significant cuts and sea level rise funding that I read in an article. And so, I don't know what to say. The other aspect of it, you know, some of us, like, you know, a couple of years ago evolved with building permits on a project and, you know, I'm one of the ones that paid for the permits. And so I have a prediction, there's, there's, there's already a lot of people that even in the past aren't paying for permits, they're just going for it because, you know, they just think it's too high and they can't afford it. So you are probably going to be opening it up to more people in that other, other camp that aren't going to use the honor system and pay and, and contribute to all this to pay. So, yeah, it just, it's kind of tied to the previous subject matter that, you know, we're just not, you have a big deficit on your budget unless, unless those figures are, are wrong that I had, but I don't think they were. They were in the paper and also that night. So we're, we're not living and now we're going to raise all these, our revenue is going to come from raising all these fees, which are basically going to hurt people. And a lot of people are just living paycheck to paycheck, even with wastewater treatment costs, with funding their water bills, sewage, electricity, everything's going up. So, you know, it's unfortunate.
Thank you.
I had one question. You said that sometimes you use market rate fees. That's kind of what is more appropriate on a personal or level? Is that, that be it? The specific example I want to give is the cost of filing an appeal of a planning commission decision, which has gone up from, let's see, 1867 to about 2017. I know that the city has costs, I'm not arguing about that, but it, it puts it out of the hands of an individual or a small group of people to file an appeal. We have the Westwood Gardens appeal, you very happily refunded the large portion of that. You may consider make codifying that a little bit to make it easier. And I speak in terms of, of just the democratic process. I've said before, I filed an appeal against the, the project in 1998 or so, and I think it resulted in a better project. In fact, I'm sure of it, okay, because it opened up the dialogue for that. The cost then was $175, which I could write a check for, but to write a check for $2,000 today seems excessive. So just consideration. There may be other things, I just picked that one because it steered to me, that can some fees be accommodated a little bit on a basis of, it's just nice to run a government for, for the citizens. Thanks.
Thanks Fred.
Just because I mentioned it earlier today, a lot of dogs on the plaza, and I'm just curious what the percentage we think of dog license fees are collected for the actual number of dogs that live in our community. I'm sure it's not as big a percentage as the wastewater and sewage fees and other fees, but I know we do have a dog license fee and that might be interesting to look at.
Thanks Joanne. Do we have any online public comment?
Nope, there's no online public comment for this item.
All right, Tabitha, is this just a public hearing now? What do you need from us? There you go. Anybody have any other questions or you want to...
If there aren't any other questions, I will just say we are doing business in the state of California, so we have to be able to cover our costs within the state. I would like to recommend that we adopt resolution number 223-50, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, updating the master fee schedule for various fees and service charges for the fiscal year of 2023 to 2024.
All right, we have a motion by council member Stacey at Goncalazar and a second from council member Stillman. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
This is brand new for me. So there's a 60-day waiting period, is that correct, where folks can...
So there's actually, it, it varies from fees, there's, it's typically by law at least 30 days on some and up to 60 days on others. We're doing a little bit beyond that, making them effective July 1st, so it's going to be, you know, 60, I can't do the math, it's too late, 60 or 71 days, I believe, until they're effective. We just wanted it to not piecemeal those in place and make it difficult to follow and to give additional time. So yes, you, there, there is a process that if folks have challenges, there's a whole, you know, the code lays out exactly what you need to do if you want to look at a fee, or if they wanted to bring it up with staff or with the council to reevaluate.
It also goes with our budget year.
It does, which is also a nice, just consistent.
And not to have it in between, but to have it all worked out for the budget year.
Thank you.
Also, just so you know, it won't naturally come back to you. This would be a final decision on the master fee. We'll use this decision tonight to build the budget, which you will see.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, and we are on to C. Consider adopting a revised hiring and recruitment incentive program administrative policy, increase the lateral police officer hiring incentive, approving retention bonus for current police officers, and approving police department physical workplace improvement. Can I have a staff report from Assistant City Manager, Dinette Dmello?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. As you may recall, in recent goal-setting and mid-year budget meetings, council has specifically discussed the severe police officer staffing shortages we've been experiencing and, for some time. In those meetings, council has presented the desire to fund additional recruitment efforts and options to attract more police officers. While staff will continue to work on identifying key items that speak to incentivizing the recruitment and retention of officers, we have identified some initial items that can be immediately implemented. The staff report included in the agenda provides in-depth information on the items before you tonight, but we did want to take this opportunity to highlight some key items for each of the considerations before you. In January of 2020, we were fully staffed with the 29 positions currently approved to be filled. Over the course of these last three years, we have lost more positions than we have been able to fill or keep filled. We currently only have 19 of our 29 positions filled with officers who can be on the street right now. That leaves us with a 34% staffing deficit or down one-third of our sworn staff. Of our 10 current vacancies, we have one confirmed hire that will be entering this July's Police Academy and two more in background as potential Police Academy trainees. The academy lasts six months and then they will have a three-to-four month field training period after graduating from the academy before they are able to independently be on patrol. We also have two candidates in background who have previously completed an academy but have not yet worked as a police officer. We have a month or two before they would be cleared to start, and once they do, we'll have a three-to-four month field training period before they are able to independently be on patrol. This is great news to likely have five of our 10 vacancies filled, but the difficulty is how short-staffed this still leaves us for many months, up to a year before they are on the street. This puts our focus more on what we can do to attract seasoned, trained lateral officers who only need one to two months of field training before they are independently able to fill a shift spot. Our average cost to sponsor an academy trainee is about $65,000. This includes costs for academy registration, clothing, equipment, everything that's involved in going to the academy, as well as they are paid a salary to attend, and we also offer health benefits to those trainees, keeping in mind that they are not able to hit the ground for at least nine months. Staff recommendation is to increase the current lateral officer hiring incentive from $15,000 to $50,000, paid out over two and a half years. A majority of the incentive would be received within the first nine months of the lateral officer's employment. This amount will allow us to be more competitive with, with most other agencies throughout the state and will provide assistance for those who might consider relocating to our area or to be able to secure housing or otherwise help, help offset other benefits they may be leaving another position for. Paying the incentive over two and a half years provides incentive milestones for the officers to remain with the city and is less than what we pay for an academy trainee while also spreading the cost for the city over a longer period of time. Secondly, the item, second item we have before you too, is with so much turnover in such a short period of time, it is also shining a brighter light on those current staff that we, that have remained truly dedicated to the city and to our Arcata community. And while there are certainly many temptations out there for them to be a lateral transfer elsewhere, they continue to choose to serve here. With the current staffing situation, this has caused our current staff to work a tremendous amount of overtime and suspend other necessary and priority special assignments that are part of the attraction to officers at any department. To recognize and incentivize the retention of these seasoned, dedicated officers, staff is recommending the implementation of a retention bonus of $7,500, paid out once per year for three years. Council approval would include authorization... out once per year for three years. Council approval would include authorization for the city manager to develop the details of the program, but would be structured for the first payment to be in June of two thousand twenty-four and annually thereafter in two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six. And then lastly, before you, we have, in recent exit interviews with departing officers, we have seen a theme that one of the lures to other agencies has been the quality of the physical work environment and equipment of the other agencies. Staff recommends the approval of up to sixty thousand dollars for department workplace enhancements. The city manager in chief envisioned this being structured as a participatory process in which current police department staff are assisting identifying and prioritizing these improvements. So, there's an overview for you. City Manager Deemer, Chief Ahorn, Finance Director Miller, or myself are available for any questions or further discussion you may desire.
Thanks, Jeanette. All right, I'm going to start on this side this time. So, Councilmember Edson Salazar.
Thank you. So, for me, this is a pretty easy decision, and I will explain why. So, when discussing concerns with constituents, I would say the vast majority of those interactions are regarding issues that could be helped if we were fully staffed in our police department. Some of those concerns include traffic safety, more of a presence in Valley West or a substation in Valley West, the plaza, encampments and other quality of life impacts, theft, broken windows, patrols of open spaces, including the marsh, community forest, and parks, more of a presence in our schools, a resource officer, emergency preparedness for critical incidents, drug, and specifically fentanyl education and enforcement. APD has not had representation on the drug force, or county drug task force, for over a year. And community outreach. So, for example, we funded an outreach sergeant position to help people in crisis, to work with our, and lead our community ambassadors, as well as the MIST program, and that Sergeant Luke Scound, who I understand is now back on patrol because of the low staffing. APD is working incredibly hard and is stretched dangerously thin, and I believe it's our responsibility not only to keep our community supported and safe, but to do the same for APD. Since I was elected in two thousand twenty, I have heard our community asking, even demanding at times, an increase in staffing in our police department. So, in a time when it's not the most popular to be in law enforcement, especially in our state, and we have to do what we must to recruit the very best candidates for our community and to retain and support the wonderful team that we currently have. So, I do support this.
Well, I support it, too, and I look forward to the budget, because I know we need to think about police cars, or at least one, just for happiness, that we have one that's working, that fits. So, I would say that I'm in agreement.
I had a couple of questions. Are we in jeopardy of being down our detective as well? Is that something that we need to be concerned about?
Yes, ma'am, we're already down a detective.
Okay.
And we are trending to where our detective sergeant is also next up to go into patrol, should we lose any other officers.
And my understanding is because we've had these vacancies for so long that we've been able to save money for, because of all the unstaffed positions. So, it kind of balances itself. We're not, like, pulling money out of a hat. It's money that hasn't been used, correct?
That is partially true. One of the challenges is that in order to even meet those minimum, those minimum staffing levels, they are relying pretty heavily in that department on overtime. So, you're paying more per hour, and you're also sort of stretching your folks thin. So, to a point, that's true, but we're not running efficiently.
Okay. Thank you. I am also in favor of staffing our police department so that they can do their job. Thank you.
So, what does the City of Eureka, what are their, what's their hiring bonus right now?
It was twenty thousand, and we've heard a rumor that is maybe, once our staff report came out, it is fifty thousand is the rumor. We don't know that for sure, but that's our understanding.
Sure. And it's only the lateral transfers that are going to be eligible for this?
Correct. We do have a, the hiring incentive program that's currently in effect does already allow a three thousand dollar bonus for someone that's graduated from the academy, so ready to, you know, hit the ground in about three or four months, but that is a different category than lateral. Lateral will be somebody that has been a police officer or is currently is one.
So, Chief Ahorn, what's the recruitment project, what's the recruitment process going to look like? I mean, I know that you go travel places recruiting, so do we have, like, a plan to, like, promote this and?
Yes, and about, we'll know if we'll be promoting it here very shortly. And if that is the case, we are, we preemptively have updated our flyers and hope that, you know, this would be the message, and we're so, so appreciative. So, we're going to use social media. We'll be working with our Personnel Department to update all of our local advertising, as well as prep our flyer for our Portrak magazine, where we can run a full-page ad for upwards of a year to really highlight these enhanced incentives to fill this desperate need right now.
Absolutely, and it is our duty to provide police officers to the City of Arcata. Kim, really, I'm sorry, did you have another question?
I did, just a quick question. So, is there a way that we might partner, collaborate with the City of Eureka, so we're not getting into this bidding war?
You know, that question has come up, and I can only speak for myself, is we are not going to engage in a bidding process for police officers. A fifty thousand dollar commitment on the part of our city council is a huge statement. Now, our Assistant City Manager has talked about perhaps expanding into other areas where we can separate ourselves from other cities through incentivizing perhaps relocation, reimbursement, maybe some housing allowance, maybe to help reimburse for childcare, school costs. So, there's other ways that we can incentivize coming to Arcata to continue your law enforcement career with a city who supports police officers. So, but I would not recommend to the city to get involved in a bidding contest. I think it sort of demoralizes the process, it de-incentivizes people where they feel like they're being bid for, but they, we can help them and support them in so many other ways.
Chief Ahorn, tell me what a typical schedule now is for one of the nineteen officers that we have left. What is, how many hours are they working? What is, what do their schedules look like?
Yes, ma'am. They work, on patrol, they work twelve-hour shifts, three days, one week, four days, another week. On the three-day week, they work an eight-hour shift to make up for some hours. You're talking about officers who not only are working patrol, but have to go to court. And typically, you know, obviously, if they're working overnight, they have to stay up and go to court during the day. They have to go to training. And because of our staffing shortage, we have had to ask officers to work additional overtime, to adjust their days off, to change them from working days to working nights. And to the credit of everyone within the organization, they're rolling up their sleeves, they know it's a tough time, and they're willing to do what they can to keep our community safe. But it is taking a toll. People are exhausted. They're fatigued both mentally and physically, and they're just looking for a little bit of hope, you know, that there's going to be this safety net coming here in the near future.
Thank you, and thank your team for that, because that is exhausting. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment, and then we can come back. Is that okay?
I just really appreciate those that have been loyal and very much for supporting and incentivizing that loyalty to retain.
All right, let's go ahead and take public comment. You've been waiting a long time.
Hello, I'm Leslie Johnson. I'm an honorable Army veteran, as well as I work in fisheries, biology, and waterway remediation. I would like to start by addressing, law enforcement is not a popularity contest. It's about whether they are effective at their work or not. So, I'd like to start there. I'm personally here because of the article in the paper today where you were urging people that have been roofied to report their experience with being roofied. In that article, you said that you didn't know roofies were happening on Arcata Square. Survivors absolutely should not be subjected to the police, the police's lack of integrity and toxic masculinity, female police included. Survivors are not proving ourselves to you anymore. Police are obsolete. You are the army of the rich. Do not throw survivors to your corrupt wolves. Cops have lost, on top of never deserving, being deserving of it, cops have lost the privilege of protecting us. The entire police force is wasteful, ineffective, and abusive. In the article, it said that there was drink strips available. I'm willing to take some of those in the absence of effective policing. When I was in the military, one thing is, we had at least a year of training before we were unleashed on people. The way that we are shortening the training and increasing monetary incentive is not an effective approach. It's ignoring the fact that none of this has been effective the entire time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we don't have enough police in town. There's a lot of, a lot of problems that are, you know, we might think of minor problems, but they affect all our lives. And I brought this up a couple, number of times about the woman that was killed in the crosswalk, but, you know, my observation is that nobody ever gets a ticket in this town from the standpoint of speeding. I've never seen it happen. And also, I mean, I had a conversation with the police about this in the past, along with the noise issue of a number of our vehicles from the youth or whatever age they are, that basically, you know, make them sound like F-16s going down the street all different times of the night, waking people up, you know, and that affects, you know, health of young kids all the way to the elderly. And so, these are kind of like minor things, but they add up, because someone's going to die. I mean, we, I think their focus is more on violent crime because of the lack of numbers in the police department. That's what I hear from them. But they also said that they need support from the city council from the standpoint on these minor things, too, because they said that it's not a priority. That was the answer when I started, like, fifteen months ago, addressing you guys. Well, not all of you, too, if you weren't on the council, from the standpoint, like, why is everyone not interested in enforcing the laws? And unfortunately, when people feel they can get away with things, then more of them, unfortunately, do the same thing. So, I think this is going to lead to some lawsuit in the future if we don't take care of it, because someone's going to get killed, and, you know, maybe it's a crosswalk, maybe it's, you know, it's a jam and an argument afterwards, which we've seen that. And we don't have enough people that are going to be able to handle that, and it's going to be another messy situation, and that's what I'm seeing. I'd also, because of the increase of the students that we're going to get, when I was in UC Santa Barbara, they had their own university center where they served alcohol. And I think the university is more appropriate for parties and those sorts of events, because they're much more trained as far as the people that work there, because they're sensitive, they're very sensitive to all the laws in the state of California. So, with the growth of more, the students going to the downtown, I mean, I hear them at two o'clock in the morning, like, coming back, they're screaming, and so some of it is they've been served a lot, way too much alcohol, and they can, I go out, because I think there's some stress going on, and just somebody trying to help another person that can't even walk. So, lots of little things, and they're going to add up to big, big things if we don't take care of them. And I'm just sort of like, it's the only city I've ever lived in that I've never seen anybody get in trouble, even when they flip a car over in this town.
Thank you, Gregory. Any more public comment?
I want to echo with great strength the words of Councilmember Edson Salazar about the required, the response from many people in Arcata about the desire for an increased police presence. The conversation is, tends to be about getting up to a fully staffed number, which is the case of twenty-nine. I have not been involved in this. Perhaps this has been done before, but I would like to see a budget for increasing that number, and what it would take to have a larger number of police in our force. The idea of having housing incentives, I would definitely like to pursue that. I think there's a variety of ways that can be done on a creative basis. When we get to the sales tax discussion, we'll have that separately. I've been fortunate in the thirty-five years or so I've lived here, I've only had contact with the police on one occasion, and it was superb. I have great faith in Arcata's police department, and I thank the police presence, not every day, but very often. Thanks.
Thanks, Fred.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry, and I just want to personally let the council know that Chief Ahorn has particularly been very, very helpful to me on issues that I've had to deal with in this city. And I've also had very great conversations and rapport with other police officers on different matters. I do think we need to have more police on duty in our town. But I also think one of the things that we need to do is not rely on the police so much for things that could be preempted. So, when we're looking at a lot of issues, we want to be a town that the police want to come to, because it's, you know, getting closer to Mayberry than it is to, you know, Gotham or whatever. So, I just really thank Chief Ahorn for all his help for me as a citizen in my needs, and I do hope that we can create whatever type of environment that will allow people to want to work here in the police, in law enforcement. But that means that we have to do a lot of other things in a lot of other arenas, so that we're not just relying on the police to solve the problem.
Thank you, Joanne. Do we have any online comment?
Checking one last time for online comments. We do not have any online public comment for this item.
All right. Before we go back to the council, I want to address, Leslie, is that your name?
All right. I know how hard it was for you to come and stand in front of us and speak your truth, and I really appreciate that. I was going to talk about roofies at council reports, but I'll just go ahead and address it now. And some people have telling me that it's been a huge problem. I just want to let you know that I've reached out to several of the bars in town, and everybody's assured me that they are going to, you know, retrain their staff and be super vigilant. I took it upon myself to order, I think, sixty test strips from Amazon. Please contact me. I will give, I will give them to whoever wants, and if I need to order more, I will. And this is something that Joanne was talking about. Sometimes it's about, you know, looking out for each other. So, it's scary to be a woman at a bar. So, you know, take care of each other.
I'm not convinced it's not the police doing it.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I don't have any more questions, but I did want to, I did want to respond to a public comment, too, and just let the community know. I have received a ticket in Arcata for traffic violations. Granted, it was, okay, so was Joanne. Granted, it was many years ago, and we were probably more staffed than we are now, but it does happen, and I wasn't happy about it.
I just want to say her name. Her name was Jennifer Mariposa Garcia. That was the young mother that was hit in the crosswalk, and her last thing that she did was to push her young baby out of the way to live. All right.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we adopt a revised hiring and recruitment incentive program administrative policy, increase to lateral police officer hiring incentive to $50,000 paid over two and a half years, approve a retention bonus for current police officers, $7.5,000 annually over three years, and approve up to $60,000 for police department physical workplace improvements.
I'll second that, and I assume that's in our budget, because one of the things we're going to consider in our budget, the $60,000, that is.
Yes, you will see that phased in over the next three years, but the $60,000 will be in the next year's budget.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Atkins Salazar and a second by Councilmember Stulman. I'm in favor.
Aye.
And I'll amend my statement. It's hard for everybody to be in a bar, not just women. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Motion passes. All right. It is time for oral and written communications. The city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council tonight are limited to three minutes. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom webinar, or press nine now if you're on the phone and you would like to make public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. When it is your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. So if you're in person and wish to make public comment, please get in line and let's get going.
Hi, my name is Joanne McGary, and if anybody's watching this on reruns on Access Humboldt or YouTube or whatever, please, you know, come on down to these meetings, because I don't want to be the only one, or one of very few who speak up here. You know, it's a democracy, and you have the right to be here too, so come on down. But I do want to say, as I alluded to before on the previous discussion, there's a lot of things we can do in our community. And when I talked earlier in the very beginning about fear, we need to not fear to experiment with things and try things and do pilots and be very creative and even, you know, forward thinking in trying to correct or solve or make better our community issues. And one of the things, a couple of things, and I talked about being brave, but I also talked previous meetings about braiding, braiding ideas together. So be brave and braid. And what I'm thinking about is, I'm going to just say this, you know, I envision dealing with the unhoused and many of the issues that involve people in very vulnerable positions in our city, really thinking differently. And I was inspired by San Antonio's model of creating a center in part of their town that had multi-services. And I think Arcata could try by taking what's the transit center in the annex area and that whole parking area, and dedicating that for a time to those issues and to the people in need there, and having much more vigorous services available for more periods of time during the day and night, and not just relying necessarily on one agency or organization, and trying to really create community services and get a lot of the community involved. There are people out there who will volunteer to help, because we want to help on this issue. And that means that our buses, that I talked about earlier too, that don't go up to Redwood Park, where we're having an $800,000 playground built. So maybe we got to consider moving temporarily our bus station to a more visible place, and maybe a place like where the car wash is at KN 10th, that used to historically be, when we're talking about historical landmarks and things like that, the train station. So we really need to braid ideas together so that we can have a really vibrant and positive community for all of the people who live here, and just try these things. Experiment a little. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, I'm going to briefly go back to the sea level rise issue. When I lived in Florida, I had a lot of conservative neighbors that didn't believe in global warming, and I did my best to convince them by looking at the science and listening to people. I'm a little surprised about a progressive area like this, where you'll find people to say, I believe in global warming, but it seems like we've had a, and I guess this goes back to the 28th meeting, that we had quite a bit of information saying it wasn't such a great idea, these areas that were the former wetland areas. So, I mean, I have, not only me, a lot of other people in town have issues with, from the standpoint that we believe in sea level, global warming, but when we listen to the experts, we don't seem to be quite in agreement with them. And then not only that, we take it one step further, where we say that, for example, the gateway area is some way an answer to global warming, because of the amount of people that you're going to put in there, and also the heights of the building, it's going to be walkable and all those things. So, I mean, that doesn't really quite make sense at all. So I want you to, for anyone that's going that route, I really want you to think about that a little bit further. And also because of what was going on with mentioning this evening with the police and drugs, sometimes when I had projects, for example, I traveled to Mexico and spent a lot of time in Mexico, and, you know, just, I'm sure you're aware that there's millions of people from our southern borders that are crossing the border, and a lot of them are getting asylum because of the drug wars that are going on in Mexico. And it's not only in Mexico, it's also in Colombia. When I went to Colombia, basically, the hotel room door had a whole message about how disappointed they are in Americans and Europeans that are buying drugs in that country or in your country, because it explained how basically 250,000 Colombians have died because of the drug wars in the past. In Mexico, it's hundreds of thousands. And it's not just people that are in the drug trade that are getting killed in Mexico. There's numerous women that have just disappeared off the streets. So it seems like we need to have like a little bit of a position on, you know, why these things are happening, and not just, you know, sort of excuse behavior of people in towns in the US, because, I mean, these people are really hurtful when I've lived there and talked to them about, you know, what's going on in the US as far as drug use, and how it affects their lives, and how it's affecting everyone's lives with the amount of people, millions of people that are coming into this country because of what is destroying their countries.
Thank you. Really? Anybody online? We do. Our first online is Anthony. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hi, everyone. You know, I probably could have added this comment to the last topic, but it's a little bit more nuanced, like some of my comments are, so it's probably better here. But in the, about law and order, as far as increasing the population, there's going to be challenges that are presented with that. And a lot of times when I talk about this kind of stuff with y'all, it's my, I like to focus on protecting the common wealth by supporting our local business culture and local economy, because the problems that are pressurized when the wealth gap increases are the, you know, the reason that population density, like building a ton of housing, doesn't always solve houselessness, right? Because there's still going to be people who are suffering from the situation that is not just lack of housing, but lack of common wealth and lack of opportunity because of, you know, basically really big businesses who have set up their empire to kind of run everything, and the people who work for them and the people who consume from them are the ones who end up suffering the most. And so Arcata kind of has a lot going for it right now as far as access to natural amenities and a local business culture. Even if we lost our major export, you know, every decade that we had one, we still have the local kind of commerce mentality. So I think that that's something really important to protect and to cherish. And then also, when I was in San Luis Obispo recently, I got to speak with some of the people who were there, and some of the people who were there houseless, and they had mentioned that they felt like it was almost illegal to be houseless, because they weren't fitting in with the student culture and the look and the feel that the town was going for, felt like they couldn't get, you know, get ahead in life being there. And that's kind of a pretty common issue that happens with, like, major cities where there isn't a lot of opportunity for people to, you know, have a home and a good life worth living and access to goods that are going to, you know, keep them healthy and happy. And then, of course, the law and order situation, you know, deals with people who are desperate, who are seeking some kind of relief or escape. And these problems, it's, we got to take care of it early, and that's a delicate situation. A nightmare that I never would like to see happen is it being unsafe to take a walk in Redwood Park. That would be a total nightmare, and that's something that we should consider, is we have a lot more people, how we can keep everybody happy.
Thank you, Anthony.
And capable of fulfilling all their needs. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other public comment.
All right. We are going to go ahead with council and staff reports. Are there any staff updates? Councilmember updates? Start down there.
So today I attended as the liaison for the city, the Homeless Housing Working Group. Arcata House Partnership was excited to share that they had completed the pool fill for the extreme weather shelter in Valley West at the permanent supportive housing, The Grove. West Village, the other Home Key Motel conversion, Dankos, has postponed to July. Hopefully, that will come to fruition soon than later. Home Key III application is going to be coming soon, so hopefully we can do more for unhoused community and those who are struggling to be unhoused. I will be attending tomorrow the Arcata House Partnership Board meeting as the city liaison. Last week, I attended our space, the Homeless Arts Project for Arcata House Playhouse, I mean, and there was a great turnout. On Saturday, April 8th, we had nearly 60 people turn out to our marsh cleanup with Pack Out Green Team. All of Arcata City Council was there, as was Jen Dart and some other folks from our staff, and also Mike Wilson, our Board of Supervisors. On April 6th, Senator McGuire held a press conference here at City Hall to announce the $1 million of additional funding for the Carlson Park improvements, which is out in Valley West, making the total of grant funding to be a 2.5 million. And Kuna was integral in getting these grants with the adoption of Carlson Park, the community cleanups in the neighborhood, as well as the park, which set the stage for ongoing events that have been a previously unused park. So it's going to be a boon, not just to Valley West, but of course, all of Arcata and tourism. So hopefully, they'll stay an extra day when they see our beautiful park with all of these new amenities. Kuna, as you may know, was the first in Humboldt County to do a participatory budget process. Excited to say that another municipality, Eureka, picked that up, and we're getting ready to do round two. We just kicked it off, did a participatory budget process. Our first event was at The Grove, which is the homeless supportive housing project out in Valley West. And we're gearing up for our second engagement at our temporary housing at the Comfort Inn with Cal Poly Humboldt students, and who will be making their home in Valley West for the next two or three years while permanent student housing is being built. And what else? Oh, Kuna will be tabling this weekend at an event for Earth Day, the Decolonizing Economic Summit at Pearson Park, and I just want to wish everyone a happy Earth Day coming soon.
Okay, so one of the, one of the things I keep thinking about is, is in our inspection program that we have, that we are not including single-family rental housing. And I'm, I know that there's issues there. And I'm told by people that have looked for housing, the conditions of the single-family rental housing is not in good shape. And I would like to see us figure out a way to do that. Also, I'm thinking about, what can we do about the empty housing that we happen to have right now? People that haven't refinished their houses and that have units that would be available for us, or the ones that are boarded up. And I would like to see what kind of a system, or what can we do about that? I know Eureka is talking about what to do about empty commercial buildings and empty residential buildings, and how to put some kind of a fine on them or something, and I'm thinking that maybe we need to look into that too, so that we can make sure that we, all our housing is, actually, we have housing, and that we just don't have things like down here boarded up, and, you know, your place is, needs to finish up, and we need to get the housing out. On another note, we had a great time with Gobit Days, migratory bird festival. We had a great attendance, and we had two wonderful staff people from the city of Arcata, Milo and Will. They did a fantastic job, and the Gobit Days Board is really proud of them and thank them very much for doing that. We had, Friday night, we had over 300 people attend the talk about the Condors. It was very successful, all the way around, the first time in four years that we've been in person. So I think that's about all, and I'm looking forward to, I think what it was, it's not postponed, but they have additional work to be done on the Red Roof Inn, and that's why it's taking longer. Construction isn't as fast as you always wish it would be, and sometimes it takes longer. I don't think the term postponed is correct. I think it's just, there's additional work that needs to be done.
Thank you. I'll just mention, since Councilmember Schaefer isn't here, that the 28th is the 20th anniversary of Redwood Coast Energy Authority. Very exciting milestone, and yeah. Everybody have a great Earth Day. Thank you.
I only have a few things. We, Main Street did a block party on H Street on the plaza welcoming three new downtown businesses last Friday, and that was really successful and fun. They're still planning the Oyster Festival and a lot of renewed energy and ideas for that, so that's pretty exciting. I have my HCOG monthly meeting tomorrow, so I'll be able to report out on that next month. And then finally, there, on Saturday, we, there was a run, a Justice for Josiah run at marking the six-year anniversary of his murder, and just wanted to bring to attention that. The city manager and I were there and participated, and they're still looking for people to come forward with information on that night, so they can, you know, solve that crime. Thanks.
I had just one more thing. Earth Day, I forgot, Humboldt Pat will be doing a cleanup from 10 o'clock at the Arcata Marsh, so we just want to keep that energy going, and they'll be giving out all kinds of prizes for those who collect the most litter. So come join us.
All right. Dates of future meetings. Do we have a change to our budget meeting?
Yeah, we don't have a finalized date yet though, so we'll keep working on it.
All right, no finalized date for our budget meeting, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Can we just remind folks, isn't there still a study session on the 20th, this week on Saturday? Yes.
The Planning Commission will be holding a study session on Saturday starting at 8:30.
Bright and early. Okay. Thank you.